In that case, good evening, everyone. To those of you in person and to those live streaming, and we welcome our community members who are in Catalina, who are also a part of our meeting in real time. We will start with having a roll call to establish a quorum.
Okay, Member Lopez?
Present.
Vice President Otto?
Here.
President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Miller?
Here.
Student Member Arroyo?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I will ask our student representative from Renaissance, Ms. Kylie Charles, to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 4-0, with Member Miller absent, to approve the compromise and release agreement in the workers' compensation matter listed on the agenda. On item 3.2, the board voted 5-0 to approve the filing of an appeal in Purb case number The board took no other reportable actions. Now we are at adoption of the agenda. So we need a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Oh. Yeah. I have a couple of modifications to the agenda before we vote on it. The staff recommends the following amendments. The first one is on Agenda Item 15.8, the Purchasing and Contracts Report. We will be deleting item number five. So when we vote on the consent calendar, one item from 15.8 will be removed. And then on Agenda Item 15.10, we will make the following modification on page five. And 15.10, I should mention, is the Board Policy on Independent Study. So the small modification is that we will move the first sentence of the second paragraph to the last sentence of the first paragraph.
I know.
Yeah, I know. In case... I'm just going to read that again because I don't know if it could be more complicated. But so on page five, we will be moving the first sentence of the second paragraph to the last sentence of the first paragraph. So two changes before we vote on the consent cal... I mean, on the agenda.
To make sure that I've got that, is the sentence you're referring to, the superintendent or designee shall ensure that a written agreement exists for each participating student as prescribed by law, and that's going to go to the end of the first paragraph?
No, not on the redlined version. If you go forward to the clean version...
It's the page five there?
And then check... Yeah, check page five on your clean version. And then it's the second paragraph... Wait, the first sentence of the second paragraph.
Are you sure there's not just one sentence?
I'm sorry, wait. It does. It does begin with a certificated employee.
Okay.
Yeah. So that sentence...
I think it's the only sentence of the paragraph.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just for clarity and transparency, I'll withdraw my initial motion so that I can make a new motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I appreciate that because I did that out of order. So, yes. We will have your motion withdrawn so you can make a different motion.
I move to approve the agenda as amended regarding both items.
And we need a second.
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 Thank you.
It's this one.
Yes. Yes, that's the one. So we will take a roll call vote on the agenda as amended.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Vice President Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez? Member Miller?
Aye.
Student Member Arroyo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And now we were at... Now we're at a fun part because we get to introduce Kylie Charles, the ASB Vice President of Renaissance. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Kylie Lynn Charles. I first want to say what a privilege it is to be speaking in front of you all today. I am the Associated Student Body Vice President and a student within the Performing Arts Theater Strand at Renaissance. I also serve as the improv team captain, president of the Advanced Drama Club, and co-president of the 2025 Senior Club. Thank you for your service to the community and schools. I hope you enjoy hearing a bit of what the Renaissance students have been up to since the last time we spoke. We have been busy at Renaissance with events nearly every day. We first honored Mr. Tran at the start of the school year, who was awarded the title of Long Beach Unified Teacher of the Year. Mr. Tran is a K-12, LBUSD grad and North Long Beach native. He also served the Renaissance community for over 10 years. We have been celebrating him all year. The culmination of the celebration happened at the Sundance Film Festival in Utah. 14 students and four RHSA staff member were able to attend the prestigious festival for the first time ever. Students on the trip were able to enjoy movies, partake in Q and As, and were even able to take the stage at the iconic Egyptian theater to take a photo with short film writer and producer Kathy Lin Che. After the screening of her award-winning short film, "We Were the Scenery", Kathy is also from Long Beach and an LBUSD graduate. The RHSA School of Film hopes to attend even more film festivals in the coming year. The year started with Camp Phoenix, our four-day freshman orientation. We got to welcome so many young, bright, new students. Club Rush followed close behind, where clubs set up tables at lunch and students signed up. We had our first annual talent show, where 10 student acts performed, and we raised $2,000 for the school. The highlights from the show were the variety of acts ranging from folk music to beatboxing. We also had our second annual Noche Latina back on September 27, 2024, run by our very own Alianza Estudiantil, which focuses on promoting all Latin culture. Throughout the night, we had dance lessons, games, music, delicious food, a low riders' car show, various different community organizations, a photo booth, Folklorico, and to finish the night off, pinatas for the children to enjoy. We take pride in our students' backgrounds, and we're glad we got to bring joy to the community. We hope to continue this event in the years to come for everyone to attend. ASB also hosted our annual Future Fest at the start of October. At Future Fest, industry professionals are invited on campus to speak to our future artists about how to break out into the professional artist world. This year, we had countless professional actors, illustrators, musicians, special effects artists, and even a Golden Globe winner. Halloween is always an exciting time at Renaissance. We hosted our annual Halloween Fest. At Halloween Fest, student clubs sell food and host Halloween activities. Students are able to enjoy inflatables, free food and candy, and of course, a costume contest. This year, ASB hosted our first-ever Halloween rave. Nearly 100 students attended the rave and danced the night away with glow sticks, black lights, and tons of snacks. While ASB was busy with all these events, the rest of Renaissance was hard at work. The improv team, orchestra, choir, theater, dance, and jazz band had fall and winter recitals. We got to perform at the Belmont Shore Christmas Parade, and select students went on a roadshow around LBUSD middle schools in November. The staff and the students are not the only ones who make Renaissance run. It is all thanks to the parents. Renaissance High School Parents for the Arts, also known as PARTS, are a group of parents who do so much for our school. Earlier this year, they brought in an artist to teach a masterclass in sculpting masks. Last month, they held our very first art-a-thon, raising nearly $8,000 for the students. On March 15, PARTS is hosting our third annual Battle of the Bands at Shannon's on Pine. Student bands compete against one another to win a $1,000 cash prize. Next Friday, to celebrate Black History Month, we are having our second annual Taste of Soul Black History Month Experience. The event is brought to us by the Black Student Union and consists of traditional soul food and barbecue lunch plates, corvettes, car shows, live music, and tons of Black vendors. We are so ecstatic about this upcoming Saturday, which is our winter formal. The theme is "A Lovely Night in Hollywood". We will be joined by Cam Sato, EPHS, Reed, Browning, and McBride. They will also join us in May for our 2025 prom, which I'm proud to announce the theme is Swan Lake. It's the season of performances at RHSA. Next month is a student dance concert held in Jordan High School Theater. Then, the first week of May is the annual musical "Once on This Island" held in our school theater. Our second annual Rencella is scheduled for Friday, May 16. Rencella was a completely new experience created by our very own Ms. Van Conness and our ASB team. Rencella is a totally free event for all students at RHSA. At this event, students are able to attend their very own Coachella Music Festival. Student bands headline the event, enjoy Kane's Chicken Fingers, eat pizza, compete in corn mazes, get airbrushed tattoos, and can even enjoy an ice cream truck. The day ends honoring our graduating seniors with a Decision Day celebration. The Fashion Department wraps up the season bringing us the fashion show and Student Magazine produced by Leo Shellwancy, our own ASB president. They have been hard at work creating all year. The theme is Patterns in Movies, and I am so delighted to be Samara Ford's model again this year. Once again, thank you for your time and dedication to all the schools. It has been a pleasure to share all great things that are happening at Renaissance High School for the Arts. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, Ms. Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. Sounds like there's a whole lot of great things happening at Renaissance.
Yeah.
And you're very enthusiastic about your school, so it really shows the kind of students Renaissance has. Quick question, what are your plans for when you graduate?
So I am already enrolled to be a freshman at Surrydo City College in the 2025 fall school year. I'm going to be studying cosmetology and hopefully do hairstyling.
Very nice. Do we have anything else? So were you one of the fortunate ones that went to the Sundance Film Festival?
No, it was students who are in the film pathway, but Ms. V C got to go. So I heard it was really beautiful there, all the snow and everything.
Oh. Well, that's different for us Long Beachians to have snow. So do you have people here that you would like to acknowledge?
Yes, of course. So I first want to acknowledge my ASB teacher. I wouldn't be here today without her, Ms. Van Conness. Mr. Tran, our very own Teacher of the Year.
Ah, Mr. Tran.
Dr. Navia, our principal. And Manona and Papa.
Well, that's wonderful. We're going to ask you to come up here so we can do pictures.
Okay.
So we'll take a little pause for that. We will... I will direct your attention to the screens because we have a video to watch.
I would describe the Black Literary Society as a program where Black students can learn more about Black history, Black culture, and about our communities through different forms of writing.
The Black Literary Society is district-wide. We have students at every school participating in a reading of the book school clothes.
We really just got to dive very deep into just understanding how our past connects to our present. And in many ways, Dr. Givens, he was also able to help us just understand how much pride that we take in our clothing and what it really meant to creating this narrative that we are more than just what people see at first glance. We went on a HBCU trip where we not only got to understand the complexity of the book, but we also got to meet with amazing professors who gave us their insight as well.
We advocated for our English class to integrate Jarvis Givens' book into her curriculum, and she was actually very happy to. Before the trip, we did not have the courage to advocate for things like that in our class and made us feel like we can persist and be welcome in spaces that are not welcome to us.
Being in this program has exposed me to people in top colleges and Ivy Leagues that are Black, that are making an impact within their communities. It really showed me because they're able to do these amazing things, I'm also able to do these amazing things within my own community.
Well, I know earlier today at our workshop, we talked about the, you know, L cap and where budgeted money is going. And for us to be able to provide these trips and opportunities for our students to see people who have been successful that they can relate to is so meaningful. And it's wonderful to have these little videos to remind us of what's going on throughout the district. So, oh, you know what? I missed Agenda Item 11.1, Measure E, Measure K, and Measure Q Bond Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report. And so I need to turn that over to Mr. Miranda. And thank you for allowing me to take things out of sequence.
Thank you, Board President Craighead. I figured it was on purpose because it's tough for me to follow a student presenter, so I actually appreciate the extra minute or two. Thank you for having me. I'm also going to ask Mr. Bishop to start working his way up to the podium, and I'm not going to steal much of his thunder. So I'll just introduce the topic and then really hand it off to Mr. Bishop to do the rest of the presentation this evening. I'm honored and privileged to get to represent the building program for the district, but equally honored and privileged to get to work with Michael Bishop and the rest of our COC committee members, who serve in a volunteer capacity. All of our local general obligation bonds are subject to what we call Prop 39. Prop 39 specifically spells out, as do our COC committee bylaws, what the role and responsibility for the committee is. One of those such things, perhaps one of the larger pieces, is a presentation to the school board and community from the chair of the committee to just describe the activities of the committee throughout the year, the highlights of the building program, and just a host of information, which is included and embedded in the agenda, also on our bonds website. I want to take a second to embarrass Mr. Bishop as he works his way up here because he has served on our committee, this is year six, which is actually the final year he's eligible to serve on our committee. So this is the last time he'll get to present the report. I hope to still see him up here in different volunteer capacities because he's an awesome community member. And with that, Michael Bishop.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Craighead, distinguished board members, Superintendent Baker, Long Beach Unified Staff, and valued community members. As David mentioned, my name is Michael Bishop. It is my privilege to present the Citizens Oversight Committee's Annual Report for the 2324 fiscal year. You should have a copy of it at your place. Having served on this committee for over five years, today marks my second and final presentation as committee chair. As I stand before you, I am not only proud of our progress, but deeply inspired by the work that we do together. The committee is not just overseeing budgets. It's shaping brighter, more equitable future for our students and community. As a committee, we meet quarterly to ensure that every dollar of our bond funding moves us closer to building the foundations of a future-ready education system for our students, teachers, and staff. Our commitment to transparency and accountability guarantees that our decisions always prioritize the needs of the young people we serve. This report highlights key projects, important facts, figures about our bond program, and offers a glimpse into the exciting future of Long Beach's educational landscape, including upcoming transformations at Poly High School and Washington Middle School. Just an aside, my two adult children are graduates of Poly High School. The full report will be posted on the bond website, in compliance with Prop 39. Looking back, the 2324 fiscal year marked a pivotal moment for the district with substantial progress in upgrading school facilities. Among the most significant advancements, Measure E continued to fund the installation of high-efficiency HVAC systems across the district. As of June 30, 84% of Long Beach Unified Schools are now equipped with air conditioning, creating a more comfortable, healthy, and productive learning environment. These upgrades also support our commitment to energy efficiency, reinforcing the district's vision for sustainability. Our bond program maintains the set standard of excellence, earning the highest performance rating from independent auditors for the 12th consecutive year. This achievement reflects integrity, commitment of the entire team behind those efforts, making certain that every taxpayer dollar is invested in creating the best possible spaces for the thinkers, dreamers, and doers of today, who will become change-makers of tomorrow. We also made remarkable strides in developing Measure K-funded aquatic centers at several high schools. These state-of-the-art facilities will provide year-round opportunities for swimming, water polo, and recreation, benefiting both student athletes and the wider Long Beach community. As we continue to build the future of Long Beach Unified, we remain committed to ensuring equity, excellence, and accountability guide every step of this transformation. With this being my final year on the committee, I am deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve this and my community. It has been an honor to work alongside such dedicated individuals and contribute to initiatives that will have lasting impact for our students and city. I am proud of what we've accomplished and confident that the progress we've made will continue to inspire future generations. On behalf of the Citizens Oversight Committee, I want to express our deep gratitude to the Board of Education for steadfast dedication to advancing education through thoughtful investment. Together, we are not only constructing buildings, we are creating a home where all of our students have a chance to succeed and the next generation of leaders can emerge. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this journey. It has truly been an honor to serve over the last six years. Thank you, and if you have any questions?
Mr. Bishop, first and foremost, thank you for your service on the committee along with the other committee members. Without putting you on the spot here and knowing full well that the report is a public report that's easily accessible and made available, just in your own words, Mr. Bishop, what would you say to our community at large, and particularly the voters that vote on these bonds? Right? In terms of our bond measures and what they do, I mean, what's your takeaway here after six years that you can share with our community about how... About our bond measures?
Well, it's a big ask. Anytime a school district asks the voters to tax themselves in the way that the Long Beach taxpayers have. It's an investment in the education of kids today and young people for the next 30, 40 years. So I would say, as a taxpayer myself, the investment, the ask that you have made is worth the investment, certainly speaking for myself, I as a taxpayer have made. There are no school funds that come from the state of California or the federal government for school construction. So this is one of very few ways that school districts can create an environment that is conducive for education and energizes those young people as they go to school every day.
Thank you.
I too want to thank you for your service. And I just have a question. Looks like there are seven members. Is that correct? And you are accepting applications for Members Taxpayers Association? But then I see that there's a member that the third term expired on 9/24. So does that mean that we're also looking for a community-at-large member to join? Are we taking applications, in other words, so that the public who may be interested in applying can go online and apply?
The district is taking applications. There are openings. That... The position you spoke of has been filled, thank goodness. But there are currently two available seats, and in September, there will be three.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the board and everyone in the district, thank you for your service. Thank you for all your time.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda?
We have no speakers for items listed on the agenda.
Okay. And then we have public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
We have 16 speakers on items not listed on the agenda.
Okay. So, did you want to... So, did you want to? If that's going to cut the number of speakers, I'm going to motion again to allow all speakers to, to give public comment for the full three minutes. Would anybody like to second that motion?
Second. Yeah.
Then we start discussion.
Any discussion?
So that puts us at roughly 15 minutes extended time, if we do just quick math?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same thing, so.
Okay. So I will, I will have our, our general counsel take a roll call vote.
Excuse me. Member Lopez.
Aye.
Vice President Otto.
Aye.
President Craighead.
Aye.
Member Benitez.
Aye.
Member Miller.
Aye.
Student Member Arroyo.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And our first speaker is Megan O'Brien, followed by Rochelle Sheel.
Good evening, President Craighead, members of the board, Superintendent Baker, and senior staff. My name is Megan O'Brien. I'm a speech-language pathologist, otherwise known as an SLP, currently working at Head Start. I have been an SLP in this district since 1997. This evening, I'm not here to talk specifically about my workplace, but rather, I'm here to shed light on the vital role of school-based speech-language pathologists and the extensive workload we manage to support students' communication and academic success. A school-based SLP is responsible for assessing, diagnosing, and treating students with a variety of speech and language disorders. These include articulation difficulties, childhood apraxy of speech, language delays and disorders, fluency disorders like stuttering, and social communication challenges often seen in autistic children. Our role is not just about helping students speak clearly, we also work on language comprehension, literacy skills, and as we saw last board meeting, augmentative and alternative communication methods for nonverbal students. Beyond direct therapy, SLPs handle a significant administrative workload. We conduct comprehensive evaluations, we write detailed reports, and develop individual education programs, or IEPs, tailored to each student's needs. We also juggle compliance with legal requirements, manage caseloads that often exceed recommended limits, bill Medi-Cal, and participate in professional development specific to our field. We collaborate with teachers, special educators, and parents to integrate communication goals into the classroom, ensuring students can succeed academically and socially. In short, a school-based SLP wears many hats: clinician, educator, advocate, and collaborator, to name just a few. We juggle therapy, assessments, paperwork, training, and compliance, all while striving to create, create a positive and supportive learning environment for every student we serve. It's a challenging but deeply fulfilling role that plays a critical part in shaping young lives. The impact of an SLP extends far beyond the classroom, shaping a student's ability to express themselves and connect with the world around them. The SLPs of Long Beach Unified urge you to recognize our vital role in student success as we negotiate the upcoming contract. Supporting the proposed changes such as clarifying contract language specific to the role of an SLP and ensuring we have manageable workloads will enable us to better meet diverse student needs and create a more equitable, supportive learning environment for all. Thank you for your time and dedication to student success.
Thank you.
Next up is Rochelle Sheel, followed by Terrence Booth.
Hello. My name is Rochelle Sheel. I am a proud, passionate, Long Beach Unified speech-language pathologist, also referred to as speech therapists or SLPs. I am here today to outline some of what SLPs do for our district and implore the board for support in upcoming contract negotiations, specifically clearer contract language specific to the role of speech-language pathologists at school sites, and ensuring manageable caseload and workload sizes. Given changing student needs, adjustments to current caseloads, and overall class sizes across programs are crucial in order to, to achieve the system, adult, and student portraits of our Vision 2035. SLPs make up a 120-plus-strong department in LBUSD. SLPs provide services and support to students who need it across every academic program, from general education multi-tiered systems of support through special-day classes, and across every academic level, from Head Start CDC through our Adult Community Transition Program. At elementary school sites, we even work with qualifying neighborhood preschool-age students, children not yet attending LBUSD schools. Therefore, SLPs are some families' first experience with LBUSD. SLPs are champions for students, directly supporting students, families, teachers, and teams at our school site, with speech and language development concerns and impairments which impact student achievement and participation in their academic program. SLPs are collaborative leaders, serving as IEP case managers and on multidisciplinary teams, working alongside our amazing teachers, school administration, and other exceptional specialists at our school site to dynamically address students' needs at school. SLPs are creative, critical thinkers, as we do our own evaluations, create goals, and provide intervention services, often making or purchasing our own activities and materials to target student needs and to support students in their classrooms. SLPs are empowering facilitators of learning, strengthening, uplifting, and centering student voices for their optimal communication and participation at school. When SLPs are spread thin across large caseloads, serving overpopulated class sizes of students with and without disabilities, our impact, effectiveness, and team's efficiency are diminished, which directly affects our Long Beach students. Thank you for understanding and supporting SLPs in upcoming contract negotiations, and for the need for updates in contract language specific to our position, and for manageable caseloads and class sizes across the district that reflect our vision.
Thank you.
Terrence Booth, followed by Jerry Morrison.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Baker, executive staff, and community members. My name is Terrence Booth, and I serve as the Vice President of TAO. I'm a high school counselor and a parent of a high school junior in this district. I stand before you tonight to call on LBUSD to adopt a zero-tolerance policy against the use of the N-word and other forms of hate speech in our schools. As a Black man, I cannot overstate how deeply offensive and disrespectful it is to hear students of all backgrounds casually using the N-word on our campuses. Even more concerning is the frequency with which Latino males in particular use this word as if it were just another slang term. Well, it is not. This word carries a long and painful history, one rooted in slavery, segregation, and generations of racism, and dehumanization of Black people. It was wielded to justify violence, strip individuals of their dignity, and reinforce oppression, while some in the Black community have reclaimed it in certain cultural spaces that does not grant universal permission for its use, especially in our schools. Given our current political climate, the use of this word has become even more racially charged, often serving as a means of belittling and demeaning Black students. What may be dismissed as casual language is, in reality, a perpetuation of systemic racism that has no place in an educational environment. The fact that students feel emboldened to use such language so freely signals a deeper issue, one that this district has the responsibility to address. Words matter. The language we permit in our schools directly shapes the culture we foster. If we tolerate racial slurs and hateful rhetoric, we fail in our duty to provide a safe, respectful, and inclusive learning environment for all students. Many school districts across, across the country have already taken decisive action by implementing policies that explicitly prohibit the use of racial slurs, along with educational initiatives to address their harmful impact. LBUSD should do the same. A zero-tolerance policy is not about restricting free speech, it is about establishing a culture of respect. It sends a clear message that racial slurs and hate speech, regardless of intent, are unacceptable in our schools. I urge this board to take action. This is not just about words, it is about respect, dignity, and the values we instill in our students. Let's ensure that LBUSD schools are environments where every student feels valued and respected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Morrison, followed by Mariana Rosas.
President Craighead, colleagues, good evening. My name is Jerry Morrison. I'm the president of the Teachers Association of Long Beach, and I'm glad to say, all of us got a reminder that the Teachers Association does not only represent teachers, we represent other professionals in our district too, and I'm happy you were able to hear a couple of those speak. I want to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight, but it's certainly on the minds of many of our members, and that is whether they or their colleagues will face layoffs this year, whether there will be a reduction in force. It's something that is disturbing even to veteran teachers because of the disruption, the knock-on effect of displacements that take place when people are laid off, but it's especially an anxious time for the younger teachers who are constantly checking their seniority number on the layoff list to see if they'll be one of the, the people laid off. We hope that there won't be, but by not explaining to us whether there are going to be layoffs or not, you are perpetuating this anxiety amongst teachers. We hoped that by now, there would have been an indication from the district to put people's minds at rest on whether they're going to be laid off or not. And this is tied to something else that is a concern for people as well. We have veteran teachers who are concerned that, well, why, why wasn't I, or why am I not being incentivized to leave so we can free up positions for younger teachers? The idea of incentivizing retirement goes hand-in-hand with mitigating layoffs. If we're not going to have any layoffs, then let us know, and then we won't have to, we'll have, we'll know what to respond to the people who ask us why we're not having a golden handshake or incentivize retirements. We met, or the groups met in bargaining on Friday, that would have been a good time to let them know, to let the organization know whether there were going to be layoffs. Tonight would be a good time too, you're all here, maybe you could make an announcement. Let us know, put people's mind at rest. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just remind everyone that with items not on the agenda, we don't discuss.
Mariana Rosas, followed by Gabriella Hightower.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow attendees. My name is Mariana Rosas. I am a senior at Carrillo High School. Today, I am here to advocate for stronger protection for immigrant students at our schools. Lately, I have felt concern for a large percent of my fellow undocumented classmates, many of whom no longer associate school with safety. At my own school, I've seen firsthand how much this is true. Classmates that were once filled with laughter and camaraderie now have empty seats. The reality is heartbreaking. Students are too afraid to attend school, a place that should be a sanctuary of both learning and community. If the absence of undocumented students being too afraid to attend school isn't enough cause for concern, then I don't know what is, which is why today I propose three simple measures to ensure our schools are safer for students with no citizenship. First, immigration officers must stay off school grounds. I demand that the current policy stating that immigrate, immigration officers must stay off school grounds, that immigration officers can enter schools be removed for the best interest of not only our school, but our entire communities. Secondly, schools must keep the immigration status of both students and families confidential unless the law requires it. This measure would best ensure equity when it comes to all demographics of students that are being protected. Thirdly, staff and students must be informed of district plans and policies to keep students safe and make sure that everyone is aware and safe of what's going on. In conclusion, ever since witnessing firsthand how the right for protection of immigrant students and families are being, are not, needs are not being met, I have made it my priority to speak up, but this shouldn't just be my priority, it should be the district's too. I earnestly ask the board that you extend more protection to all my fellow classmates and their families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gabriella Hightower, followed by Lily Danks.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gabriella Hightower, and I go to Lakewood High School, and I stand before you today to address the matter that has impacted many students, the safety and well-being of our immigrant students. With all the media and laws being passed around, students have been uncertain and worried about their safety on campus. Imagine the place where students sometimes spend more place than they do at home, where they're supposed to be able to laugh and see their friends, talk to their favorite teachers, is turning into a place associated with fear, where they have, have to question whether or not they'll be going home later that day. It is our duty to guarantee that every student, no matter their race, background, or immigration status, that they feel safe, secure, supported, and empowered as individuals. Every student deserves an opportunity to have access to an education and excel in our school system, which can only be done if that foundation of safety is there. If not anywhere else, the only place that my peers and I should feel safe at is at school. With that being said, I propose that schools should set up a protocol and guidelines to prevent any release of student personal information, as well as legal status. It should also be made clear that parents have the legal right and choice to deny their students' information from being released. It has been said that immigration officers like ICE can enter schools in instance of an emergency, but this has no, this has not actually been backed up by any law. As a district, that is said to care and consider. Each and every student, I urge you all to please take precaution and set up protocols that require officers to provide proper documentation warrants if these arrests were to take place. It will also be beneficial to set up mental health programs, specifically for our undocumented students and families, to help, you know, them cope in this time of uncertainty. I urge you all to emphasize with us, these are my peers, my family, your students, and your students who are not defined by pieces of paper. Your students are not defined by unjust laws or what the media has said about them. They're defined by their diverse, their diverse culture and their unique aspects that they pour into this very education system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily Danks, followed by Alina Jean-Baptiste.
Good evening, members of the board, executive staff, and fellow attendees. Long Beach prides itself on its diversity, a diversity added to by immigrants regardless of documentation status. As a senior at Long Beach Poly, I have the privilege of interacting with numerous cultures every day, but this environment has become increasingly anxious as I, my friends, and my peers become concerned with the federal administration's immigration policies. We have been taught to speak up for what is right. Over the past few weeks, students of this district have demonstrated that they are passionate about immigration rights. They are passionate about protecting their friends and family. When's the last time a bunch of high schoolers agreed on something? Listen to your students, follow the momentum fostered by the youth, and commit to us. We, as a city and as a people, tell ourselves that diversity adds to the beauty of our community, and it definitely does. Now, I implore the school district to take definitive action to protect this diverse community we have formed together. We have an obligation to the students in this city to protect their right to education. Money is earned for every student that attends school, and for all that is gained, we must give back. The district's current policies regarding ICE are a good start, but not direct enough in their language. I propose that we explore the following solutions and amendments to district policy. Immigration officers should not be allowed on campus under any circumstances. There is no legal backing to the assertion that ICE can simply enter schools despite what our country's leadership says. The district is not obligated to allow ICE into schools without a federal court, court order approved by the district general counsel or superintendent. Right now, policy prohibits disclosure of a family citizenship status unless authorized by FERPA. But how many people read the entire pop-up message? Do you read the terms and conditions of every service you sign up for? When parents update their children's information and FERPA writes, it must be accessible information that parents can choose not to disclose their family's immigration status. We must protect student records unless disclosure is legally compelled. Finally, a document was recently sent to teachers regarding what to do if ICE requests to enter the school. The document in question is a flowchart describing when compliance is mandatory and when it is quote-unquote "not required." This is a great step. Education is vital. I propose that we go further with these resources. Ensure that all students are aware of their rights. Many of my teachers and the school library have printed little red cards. The detail- how to respond to immigration enforcement. The district should print these cards and other similar information. If these cards are readily available, accessible, and translated into multiple languages like Tagalog, Kamai, and Spanish, more people will have the resources to protect themselves in and out of the home. California law states that undocumented children in California have the right to attend school. Let students finish their school days in peace and safety, and let us know that you are here for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alina Jean Baptiste, followed by Yessenia Barron.
Good evening, members of the board, executive staff, and fellow attendees. My name is Alina Jean Baptiste, and I'm a senior at Polytechnic High School. I'm also here, along with the previous students, to represent the organization I work for, Californians for Justice, an organization who, as you may know, focuses on educational and racial justice. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the rights and safety of our undocumented, indoc status students. As we have seen in the past few months, there is growing unrest as ICE raids happen across the country, state, and even here in Long Beach. As rates increase, more people are becoming scared, and conversations are being held over the safety of undocumented students here in LBUSD. Two weeks ago, at Poly and other high schools across the district, hundreds of students walked out to show how important this issue is to them. So I stand before you to demonstrate how important this issue is to me. I myself know and care for undocumented people, family and friends who are worried over their rights and their safety. I am concerned for them every time they step out of their homes. My mother is a fifth grade teacher at Adams Elementary School. Every day, I hear her stories of students throughout her school whose loved ones have been deported. Mind you, these are 10-year-olds, watching their parents being taken away from them, fearing that they might be next. School should be a place where you do not have to worry for your life. School should be a place of safety and of refuge, yet we're seeing increase of caution in students when all they should be worried about is their education. At the state level, Bill AB 49 has been introduced, which states that school officials and employees of a local education agency should not collect information related to their students and their families' immigration status. I understand that in terms of state legislation, you do not have jurisdiction, but I ask you to take inspiration from AB 49 as you approach the policies of this district. I ask the board to strengthen their sanctuary policy and increase protections for undocumented students, so that school is not a place of fear, but of community. I ask that you inform our students of their rights, both on and off campus, through their teachers, care centers, and other guidance staff on campus. I ask that you protect the information of our students and their families, making sure they know that their right to inform is optional, not necessary. I ask that you continue to keep immigration officers off campus. ICE is already in our communities, please do not let them invade our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yessenia Barron, followed by Ashley Sanchez.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow attendees. My name is Yessenia Barron, a senior at Long Beach Poly High School and former student at Ernest McBride Senior High. I'm also here on the part of Californian for Justice. LBUSD's mission has been to provide students with a culturally responsive and sustaining learning experience, creating an equitable school system that is affirming. As a student in the district for almost seven years, it has become clear that we are approaching an era that is unsustainable, compromising the education of our students, which is classified in the state of California as a human right. The district has notified students of their dedication to reject any attempt to undermine dignity, create division, or deny the right to an inclusive education. However, by enacting a policy where immigration officers may bypass on exigent circumstances, we are violating that mission. Our schools are a vessel for education, a path to the future for many students. Many of these students are striving to receive an education as they are the first in their families to graduate high school or pursue higher education. And many of them have fought through discrimination, experiencing prejudice even within their classrooms, whether it be by their peers, their educators, and even administration. And we can no longer hold back and silence their voices and allow them to be served in justice. To make a true difference, I respectfully ask the board to take action on these suggestions. Our schools should solely be a place of learning, a place of education, not a place where ICE infringes on our student rights. Immigrants have been the backbone of the United States all throughout history. As of 2023, the census estimates that there are 45.3 million immigrants in the United States, people like you and I, who are trying to provide for their family and make a difference in the community. Our priority as a district should be education, however during these times, we are straying away from what that entails. As a CIC pathway ambassador, during my time interpreting for students throughout the school of choice period, instead of asking teachers what classes they would have if they were in CIC, the reality for our immigrant community are questions such as, will my child be safe? Will I be safe to bring my child to school? Considering this is the new reality, if we were to implement a policy similar to Seattle Public Schools to prohibit ICE from entering on campus, we are able to secure a future for all students without fear. I quote Seattle's school district's website, "We will not tolerate any action that disrupts our students' sense of security or the right to an equitable education. Seattle Public School is legally required to educate all students regardless of immigration status or national. As by law, school staff shall not grant federal immigration authorities information or buildings without preview and approval from the general counsel office. If we were to implement such policies and base them on the approval of the superintendent and general counsel to approve these enforcement, we would be able to guarantee student safety on campus and create an environment where our education will not be disrupted nor harmed." Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Sanchez, followed by Micah Harris.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ashley Sanchez. I am a parent of three children who attend school in this district. I have always hoped that the district and its staff would look to my children's safety and education. Sadly, that doesn't seem to be the case this evening. My son Ari Sanchez is a second grader with high functioning Level 1 autism. He has been in general education his whole life, and he has, and has been meeting and exceeding or making progress in all his IEP goals. Despite his great progress, district staff at Carver Elementary decided that he should be taken out of his general education class and moved to a CCT class, all without providing him with sensory integration services and other services he needs to make more educational progress. Since our first IEP meeting for Ari, it has been evident that the staff at Carver haven't shown an interest in properly educating my son. According to the law and state regulations, a student should not be removed from his educational placement until he has been assessed in all areas of suspected disabilities, and should never be removed if he is making progress on his IEP goals. Despite my repeated requests for assessments for Ari, there has been significant pushback. When Ari was finally assessed in sensory integration, the expert provided a detailed report with recommendations for services to help Ari be able to handle sensory in classroom. However, none of these recommendations have ever been implemented to date. During this year's IEP meeting, the draft IEP showed that Ari met or exceeded most of his goals set by his behavioral specialist, speech therapist, and occupational therapist, and was progressing towards other goals. However, his academic and educational goals set by our IEP team last year were not even worked on. Carver staff claims that Ari's father and I did not consent for staff to work on his academic goals. This claim is completely false, as I have given, I have signed and given consented specialized academic instruction, but the district told me, even though this is available at his current school, the district refused to offer it to my son Ari unless we removed him and added him to a CCT class. SAI is provided by an RSP teacher a few times a week. You can push in or pull out. I know this because Ari's older sister Abby receives the same service at Carver. The staff's refusal to offer SAI services is clear and neglect on my son's educational needs and a violation of his rights. How can you provide them for one of my children and refuse the other? Despite these challenges, Ari continues to make progress on all his IEP goals in all areas. Unfortunately, after a terrible OAH decision by a judge who didn't understand what an offer of FAPE is, and that we must be told how much time Ari would spend in SAI instruction, we have filed an appeal with the federal district court. Even though we informed district's legal counsel, Megan Kinsey, we were told by the staff at Carver that Ms. Kinsey advised the district not to let Ari return to his stay put placement at Carver. On February 6th, Ari was removed in place at MacArthur, despite an ongoing appeal and a stay put order. This appeal notice was sent to Ms. Kinsey on February 11th. I feel like my family is being targeted. My daughter was also targeted at her school by her principal, pulled into his office, without getting any consent from her father and I, and spoke with her behind closed doors.
Thank you. Can we, can we have a staff member take some contact information, Dr. Chual? Thank you.
Micah Harris, followed by Maddox Harris.
Good evening, members of the board. I am here on behalf of CFJ and my community as a student of Long Beach. And I am here to share both my emotion and the, I guess, my comments on, my comments and thoughts on the types of action, executive orders by our country, and I guess our district's lack of action or vocalization on these issues. "We, the people," a phrase that echoes throughout US history like some melody within a chamber's walls, written throughout history like a proverb in countless schoolbooks, legislation, and stories. But I implore you to define who is we, not in the context of the 17th or 18th century, but the moment I live and breathe. So before you do, listen to me. I, a Samoan, Mexican, and Black individual, have never been so appalled by our nation. Our government's actions have not filled my people with such indignation. For this moment, I speak, people of countless skin tones live in fear. Innocent children walk into schools, wondering when ICE will rise, fearing the day they will meet their demise. But before I continue, I must confess, I have lost faith, I have lost all hope in our country and state, but I stand as a hopeless soul here before you to uphold my people, because I must. I must speak, scream, yell, cry out loud to demand your attention, before one of my peers in my school is apprehended, before an ICE agent's knees is placed on a student's chest. I and many others demand protection. Legislation to keep ICE out of schools, for their right to live within this country is theirs as much as it is ours. And so, we, the people, will not stand to see a future rises in schools. We, the people, demand our youth to be safe. We, the people, demand justice for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maddox Harris, followed by Awitz Romo.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow attendees. My name is Maddox Harris, and I am a senior at Poly High School, representing CFJ. I am here to talk about Trump's recent legislation regarding immigration through a poem titled, "A Step From Tragedy." This is the story families will be telling if we don't act against ICE raids. Today, I went to my holy place. I prayed for my son, saying he is blessed, but I thought to myself, not when DHS dispatches officers whose raids collect on CBS. I've learned that it's us against the nation. Hours later, officers stationed at my son's school over illegal immigration and told me, he didn't make it. Nowhere is safe. Racism is commonplace. My security depends on those who robbed it, no trace. My tongue is tied, my lungs rely on gasping for life because a hospital call I got surprised me so much, I hardly survived. Even at the risk of crying out my eyes, I asked his teacher, how did he die? It only took a bullet to break the crowd. It only took a shooter to mistake his sound. It only took the pigment of his skin to end up on the ground. Hearts pounded as ICE surrounded the playground. Children who met through icebreakers wished to drown in salt shakers, their brains frozen, feigning tranquility amidst anxiety makers. ICE, salt packets and matches too far to claim. ICE claims we need to refrain from hysteria. Seized reigns because criminals are within the area and they're hiding in plain sight. What they meant to say was my son was a suspect under their rights, lined up in single file. My son was so sick to his stomach, bile built up until his mouth ran like eight mile, because I told him, they gun it whenever his guts began to plummet. But ICE was told the same, so they gunned him. ICE rummaged through file cabinets, looking for information on immigration status. My son died because Trump's legislation is filled with malice. This story isn't too far away from reality. ICE's legislation is a step closer to tragedy. We must prevent ICE from school entrance when, without a court order, superintendent signature, or warrant, no exceptions. I speak volumes for the viewers, advocates, and violators, because I value humanity despite immigration status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awitz Romo, followed by Denise Tapia.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Baker, and community members. My name is Awitz Romo Gonzalez. I'm the organizing director with Californians for Justice. I'm here because our schools should be places where every student, no matter their immigration status, feels safe, supported, and protected. In the past weeks, and even today, students have walked out, raising their voices in anger, fear, and pride. They made it clear, the district isn't doing enough. When young people take to the streets, it means the adults in power haven't been listening. I'm here to make sure their demands aren't ignored. Right now, the district's sanctuary policies have some gaps. Schools should not be sharing student or family immigration status unless required by a real court order. DHS and immigration courts do not have that power. The district must make this clear. The district must also keep immigration enforcement off campuses unless agents have a federal court warrant and explicit approval from Dr. Baker and the general counsel. There's no legal basis for the exigent circumstances loophole, and it needs to go. I recognize that the district has taken some steps, and I applaud efforts like partnering with organizations like ORALE to provide Know Your Rights workshops, making red cards available at schools. These are important resources, but I encourage you to ask, what else is possible? How can we go beyond the minimum and ensure every student truly feels safe and supported? The students before me have spoken, their safety and dignity are not negotiable. The district must act, not just with words, but with real policy changes that protect immigrant students and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Tapia, followed by Jennifer Trotter.
Hello, LBUSD Board of Education. My name is Denise, and I am community organizer with ORALE. I'm here to urge you to strengthen policies that protect students' privacy and safety in the face of threats from the Department of Homeland Security and our president. I hope that this topic today would be agendized, so not only do, not only am I asking for stronger policies, but I also ask that you move with urgency and steadfastness and agendize this for the March 5th meeting. First, we must reinforce our commitment to protecting student records. Current policy rightfully prohibits disclosing immigration or citizenship status without authorization under FERPA. However, we need clear language ensuring that law enforcement, including federal immigration agents, cannot access student information unless compelled by a court order. Immigration courts and DHS directives do not meet the standard, and disclosure should always require written parental consent, which must remain entirely voluntary and should be communicated as so to parents. Second, we ask that we close the loophole allowing federal immigration officers onto campus under so-called exigent circumstances. There is no legal basis for this in civil immigration matters. Instead, access to school grounds should require, again, a federal court warrant and explicit approval from the superintendent and general counsel. Like some students have mentioned here, Seattle Public School has already implemented a stronger Like some students have mentioned here, Seattle Public School has already implemented a stronger, clearer policy, so we should be able to do the same. Our schools must remain a place where students feel safe and can focus on learning and not fear that they may not be able to return to their homes, so please act now to safeguard students' rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jennifer Trotter. Okay. Sahaka Billavoto, I apologize for that.
Good evening. You have heard many numbers, and you will continue to hear many numbers. Twenty-five percent of the city's population is made up of immigrants. Seventeen percent of our students are English learners. Eleven thousand people have been arrested and deported without due process as of February 17th. You will hear these numbers, and you will, but you may not hear, see the faces, faces of children who come home to see that their parents are gone, faces of people being crammed into military cargo planes like cattle, faces of people waiting in silent terror, waiting for a knock at their door. These people are our neighbors. They are our friends. They are fathers, mothers, sons, and daughters, and they are Americans. The United States is waging a war against the people who built it, fought for it, died for it. Our city cannot stay silent. Our district cannot neglect the innocent, and we cannot be neutral. We call on our Board of Education to continue to hold strong in the face of injustice. We must double down on our policies to keep privacy intact and to let immigration officers onto campus if and only if they have valid warrants or subpoenas. In 1776, America had the courage to say, "All men are created equal," and 249 years later, will we keep saying those same words? Will we continue to believe in what made our nation great? Will we continue to fight for the American dream to belong to all, or will we, as citizens of Long Beach, kneel before the darkness that now clouds our nation? Because this dream does not belong to any one race, one gender, one ethnicity, one class, one creed. It is a dream that belongs to all mankind. Our school district is the last line of defense. Let us fight for this dream. As a noise of chaos echoes throughout the nation, let us, as people of Long Beach, do what we do best. Let us sing melodies of justice and songs of hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is Fernando Acevedo.
Hello, board members. My name is Fernando Acevedo. I am a community lawyer at Orale. After a month in office, the president has clearly shown his intent to violently target our immigrant communities. This targeting is showcased through increased immigration enforcement and even the rescinding of the Department of Homeland Security's memo restricting enforcement at sensitive locations, including schools. Therefore, we have to take action to protect our immigrant communities in Long Beach. I am before you today to urge the board to add this to the next agenda, to approve stronger protections at the next board meeting scheduled to be held on March 5. Specifically, I encourage policy to protect student and parents, as well as caregivers' records from law enforcement, and ensuring it is clear to both parents and caregivers that disclosure of student records requires voluntary consent. In addition, that policy allow, additionally recognizing that policy currently allows immigration officers to bypass protections under exigent circumstances and encouraging that that should be removed. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. We will start with the business, budget, and policy development.
For those of you that are leaving, I think you want to stick around for the report on the business and policy superintendent advisory group. First and foremost, before our consideration today, colleagues, is action on board policy, revisions to board policy, 6158 Independent Study. We've all had time to, you know, look at the suggested revisions and take action on it today. We also have coming down the pipeline at our next board meeting, additional policies, including revision and/or updates to our immigration policy. And so, I do want to take a moment to first acknowledge the public comments that were made today and to thank the students in particular for their courage, for their bravery. Dr. Baker, at a rally that her and I attended and other colleagues quoted from an African proverb, a question on, "How are the children?" And I think today is just an ongoing reminder that our children are not well. If our children are not feeling safe in schools, then I think we need to continue, Dr. Baker, colleagues, Jerry's here from our Teachers Association president, to keep affirming that we will do everything and anything within the law to ensure our students' safety. We have to keep reminding every single person in our district around the statements that have been made, around our commitments to uphold, that we will do everything within the law to ensure student safety and our families. There are cards and communications protocols that are going out to school sites, so I just want to encourage Dr. Baker and the team. Our communications folks are here. I think we just need to keep doing more. And that we will have policy before us that will have massive implications for ensuring that we maintain and uphold student safety. Among those is, still not sure if it's going to be an update, a revision, a new policy, but we will have something for us to consider, and I want to encourage my colleagues that we do that through policy, that we do that through budget, that we do that through protocols, procedures, and practices at every single school, for every single student in our district and for their families. So it's heartbreaking to me, heartbreaking, to hear of the damage that's being caused, that has already been caused, for those students that we hold so precious in our school system. So just big props to the speakers, to the students. Please know that our low protocol dictates that we cannot directly respond to your public comments that are not on the agenda tonight, that we are intently listening, and that we are actively doing and are going to absolutely do more. We heard you loud and clear. We've done some stuff. We're going to do more. It's coming. And for that information that's already out there, for the partnerships that we hold dear to our district, more to come in that March meeting. But even before that March meeting, again, it's just an affirmation, Dr. Baker, to continue communicating, to continue reaffirming. For our immigrant students in particular, but for all of our students, including our LGBTQ students, I know some communications went out this week as well, that we are here for you, students. We are listening, and we are prepared to stand with you outside, in front of every school, every classroom, every office, to ensure your safety, your well-being, and that you thrive in our school district. And so, that's all within the context, Jeff, of policies coming our way. So general counsel is on it. Our superintendent is on it. Our deputy superintendent is on it. Our chief academic officer is on it. Our directors, our principals, we're all on it, and we just need to go faster and do it stronger, right? So heard you loud and clear. That's my report.
Thank you. Next, we have instruction and student learning supports.
No report tonight.
Thank you. And workforce development.
No report tonight.
Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar, and I will just remind the board that we pulled item number five from 15.8, and we made that slight modification to page five with 15.10. So we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you?
Yes, I first wanted to ask for Dr. On to speak to 15.9. I withheld it from my advisory groups because I think that it's more important if it comes from her office, and so if you could speak to 15.9 for us today.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Miller. So as part of our consent calendar, we have item 15.9, which is a resolution to release special contract employees. As part of our annual staffing cycle, we have a legal obligation to notify any employee on a special contract of their status. So this is different from a reduction in force, is this is a yearly process for any employee on a leave replacement. We currently have 184 temporary employees as leave replacements. So leave replacements occur when a certificated employee has been granted a leave for either a semester or a year, or they're experiencing a long-term illness. So we refer to this as a leave replacement because they are technically holding a position of an individual on leave that will return.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
Yeah, item 15.4. If someone can just elaborate on the response to the recommendations requested by the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury in regards to the CTE pathway report?
Yes, I can elaborate on that. So this was a grand jury report that came out in 2022, '23. It had 12 items to it. We had responded to all 12 items originally, 10 of which met the criteria of a full response to that grand jury request. Two of the items were pending, and those are the two items that you see on tonight's report, with an update to the grand jury on our response to those two items.
Can you just speak a little bit for the public on those two items?
Sure. So one of the items is specific to our CTE programs and how they are outlined within our LCAP. So specific language, as Dr. Salazar referenced this evening, was made to update that language within our LCAP, specifically calling out our CTE programs and this, you know, the data associated with completing those CTE sequences, how those CTE programs exist within each of our high school pathways, you know, that, those, that specificity within our LCAP. The second item is specific to apprenticeships, and this is one that we're, we have not yet fully completed. Apprenticeships play a unique role within our system and our relationship with some of our partners in a broader context. We are working closely with Long Beach City College to expand our apprenticeship program offerings, understanding that there are certain limitations that a K-12 system has in regard to apprenticeship programs. So for example, the, one of our partners, our port, for example, has a high need in certain work areas. You might find that within welding, plumbing, electrician. We are actually not allowed to offer specific programs in those contact, in those content areas for students under the age of 18. So essentially, what we do in partnership with our local organizations is offer apprenticeship awareness programs so that we can build awareness of the programs that Long Beach City College offers, that the Port of Long Beach offers, to really provide this viable option to our students that may choose those particular careers.
Thank you. Also, on item 15.8, the con, number 17, the contract to provide information technology security consulting services for the district, and increasing it by 109,900 from 106,300 to 216,200, I guess my question is, what specific outcomes have we, have we achieved or are looking to achieve?
Thank you for your question. Gartner provides independent research and advisory services around technology. So for example, we will use their services for independent research on something that we may be contemplating a purchase for hardware, for software, for security-related services, things like that. So one example of how we might use those services is if we have a contract or renewal with a technology service provider, we will run those contracts through the Gartner services to get feedback, independent response on whether our pricing is adequate, how it compares to other customers that may be purchasing those same types of services. And as well, we use it to, to explore new technologies, right? So for example, we might be researching business software, we might be researching artificial intelligence tools and programs and things like that, and so we'll use, we'll tap into their research and into their services to give us guidance as we explore those avenues. I don't know if that directly answers your questions, or maybe you have a follow-up to
No, so, so, so it's consulting. We're paying, we're upping 100, over $100,000 to get advice on...
Exactly, on our overall technology programs.
Okay, and then one more question on item 15.10, on the independent study. So if, if I can get to how many students, or approximately how many students we currently have enrolled in the independent study program, and with the new changes to, to the policy, will parents be able to request independent study for their child, and then, based on the language, likely be granted that independent study?
We'll have to get back with you with the numbers of students that are currently enrolled in independent study. We have a couple of different programs across grade spans, and the question as to if parents would have the opportunity to request independent study?
So, so the language, from what I read, makes it, it appears to make it just that much easier for parents to request independent study. So I'm, that, that's what I'm trying to confirm. Is it, you know, are we changing the policy to, to, to be a little bit more flexible with our families?
We're not changing the policy to be more flexible. We're changing the policy to align with ed code specifically, and for a future, if the board requests a presentation about other, how we handle independent study across the district, I think it would take us some preparation to be able to adequately describe what independent study is across the district. But this policy specifically is, you might call it cleanup and alignment, both to meet audit requirements as well as ed code.
Okay.
But we can bring, we could bring back other information about...
So it's, so the changes are because we weren't meeting ed code and we're just aligning and trying to make sure we are...
There are, there have been some changes in ed code, that this is then taking us to compliance for the changes in ed code, and we did have an audit finding. This also addresses an audit finding in our independent study.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion for the consent calendar? Then I will ask Mr. Riel to take a roll call vote.
Certainly. Member Lopez.
Aye.
Vice President Otto.
Aye.
President Craighead.
Aye.
Member Benitez.
Aye.
Member Miller.
Aye.
Student Member Arroyo.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll ask our superintendent to take into consideration that the board is asking for further information on independent studies and, and maybe we can have that on a future agenda and revisit that and take a deeper dive.
I've got a note. Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the staff report, and so we are...
President Craighead, may I suggest a quick break for our staff to, and for you all to use the restroom, five minutes for us to reset and have our staff ready to go, who will be presenting the next report?
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene after five minutes. Thank you, everyone. We have one more business item on the agenda that I'd like to get to this evening, and that is our board goals, one and two, mid-year data monitoring, and I'll just kind of introduce this, this topic by saying that this is a learning process. And I'll just kind of introduce this, this topic by saying that this is a learning process. A lot of us have, have been on this journey for a few years now. There have been a few trips involved. I know Mr. Otto went to attend a training, and I attended a training in Fresno. And I neglected to shout out some new friends from Arizona, in case they're watching, because they did tell me that they watch other board meetings to gather information. But shout out to Milia, Sophia, and Jay in Arizona. The, the learning process that we're on is all for student outcome-focused governance. And the basic premise, the guiding principle really, is that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And in fact, at the three-day training I attended, that was the extent of the slideshow presentation, and it was up the entire three days. Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And what we're trying to do as a board is to change our behavior. We're trying to change our focus so that we are looking at student outcomes. And the learning process is all about what we need to do in order for that to happen. And so we, in the coming weeks and months, we are going to be adjusting, we will be adjusting the way we do things as far as, you know, the agenda is concerned, what we, what we focus on. We're going to be talking about the self-evaluation tool. Back in December, we had a meeting December 7th on a Saturday, and we were discussing board bylaws and the self-evaluation tool. And that's something that will be revisited on a regular basis because this is a process. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but something that we're working on. So with that, I will turn it over to, oh, to Mr. Moskowitz, and we'll get right into it.
Thank you, President Craighead. Yes, actually, the last meeting on February 5th, I was watching on YouTube of this board meeting, because I wasn't here. And I think Dr. Benitez, it might have been you, gave the shout-out to myself, Dr. Madrigal, and Haminah Lallani. The three of us had an opportunity to go to the staff cohort version of the student outcome-focused governance workshop. Similar to where you, I think, were, Ms. Craighead, we learned a lot about, and really are thinking a lot about, with Dr. Baker and others, thinking about the interim goals that we've set, and are the interim goals that we've set the most predictive of the board goals that we're ultimately trying to achieve? You'll hear more about that in the coming weeks and months. We learned about interim guardrails, which is something that we know that Dr. Baker is interested in, what will that look like? So we're, we're deep into thinking about what interim guardrails will look like. And then we too spent time in the self-assessment framework and learned a lot about what you all are up to from an earning of points perspective, and ways that, as a district, we can kind of continue to move on that journey. So it's nice that we're kind of on these parallel learning journeys, and we think, you won't see a lot different tonight, because we're just starting this, the journey, but we think over the next several weeks and months, we're going to really be able to collectively bring some good thinking about student outcome-focused governance into the work. I also want to briefly connect back to the board workshop from earlier this afternoon. If you're watching this, or you didn't watch that workshop, I encourage you to do so. But in the LCAP presentation, there was conversation about some data as it relates to A-3G eligibility and grad rates and things like that. And it's just a reminder that different data, we use different data for different purposes. That data was really looking at like big, broad data across many different metrics, and thinking about how is our entire system moving? And when we think about student outcome-focused governance and kind of channeling our inner A.J. Crable, it's the fewer goals that go deeper. And so tonight, as we continue this journey through student outcome-focused governance, and we continue with the monitoring calendar into board goals one and two, we're really specifically talking about the interim goals that were, as it relates to the board goals one and two. And so we went from this really big, high-level, broad summit of data earlier today, and now we're going into the more interim, interim metrics as it relates to board goals. So again, and we'll continue, I appreciated the reminder today, that we need to continue anytime we bring data in front of the public, essentially, in front of the board. We want to make sure really clear on the purpose of that data and how it's different, maybe than some other things. You all should have in front of you the Board of Education Student Outcome Monitoring Inquiry Questions. So I'm just going to give you a moment to orient yourself to those and the actual slide deck for just a moment. And specifically, so maybe this is a little different than we would have done prior to going to that cohort. But what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to look down the first two columns, kind of the who questions and the what questions. So just read those, through those for about 30 seconds. So of course, you all have already had access to the slides. You've had them for the last week, and so you, you're already kind of orienting yourselves to some of the data. The purpose for Dr. Madrigal's presentation tonight is not to share new data with you you haven't seen. And it's not necessarily to explain the data that you have already seen, because you're probably already thinking about it. But what I would encourage you, as she's sharing the data that you've already looked at, and we're maybe asking some questions, I would even ask each of us in this room, frankly, to be asking some of these questions of our, to ourselves while we're looking at the data. So they don't all have to be asked openly in public, but these are guiding questions that we should all be asking ourselves when we're looking at student outcome-focused governance board data, board goal data, as we're starting to kind of figure out, like, who's this working for? Are we meeting our targets? What are we learning from this? And some of the other questions that are there. So you may, one of you may ask a question or two from here to the team. And you may also just use these as your own guiding questions as the presentation continues to unfurl. So with that, I will hand it over to my cohort mate, Dr. Madrigal.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Craighead, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, senior team members, and our LBUSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the board with an update on our board goals one and two. I also want to take an opportunity to thank the research and student outcomes team for their contribution to our presentation this evening. So we began our presentation by outlining the two goals that will guide our focus this evening. Goal one, goal board one, reading proficiency, and goal two, reading acceleration. During the presentation, I will be sharing information regarding the leading indicators that we've identified that support these two goals. This approach allows us to stay focused and enhance the precision of our goals and updates. And please note that for these two particular goals, we will not be looking at disaggregated data, in particular, student subgroup data, as those are not data points that are part of the two board goals that we're reviewing this evening. You also have an opportunity to look at the assessment window for, windows for goal monitoring. And for tonight's presentation, we're specifically looking at data that was collected in the month of November and December. We analyzed data in regards to our foundational reading skills assessment and our I-Ready Diagnostic 2. So our first board goal is reading proficiency, which states the percentage of grade three students who meet or exceed grade level standards on the state English Language Arts S-Back Assessment will grow from 48% in June 2023 to 70% by June 2028. The English Language Arts S-Back results are available approximately at the end of the summer, and students take S-Back for the first time in grade three. The two leading indicators that we will be looking at are our foundational reading skills or FERSA, and I-Ready reading placement. For goal one, we continue to monitor our cohort of students, the visual shows who we're monitoring, and what are the leading indicators that we're looking at. This visual has been provided to the board in previous presentations. But let's start by looking at the foundational reading skills assessment and actually defining what the assessment is, what it is and who is it assessing. So this assessment is administered to students in our system in K-1 and 2, and it focuses on word recognition skills. So when these skills are developed, it enables students to recognize words automatically and effortlessly. So the assessment emphasizes key areas such as decoding, phonological awareness, and sight recognition. And so we've provided an example of what we would be assessing in terms of kender skills. So you have a list of some of those skill sets. For example, naming upper and lowercase letters, syllables, and we've provided, for the most part, the list of those skills. We also provided a reading framework that we've, we've discussed in detail in previous board presentations, which is the reading framework Scarborough's Rope. At this time, we won't get into the specificity of the framework, but we wanted to, again, remind the community and our members that it is grounded, our assessment is grounded in this reading framework. So now, let's look at our leading indicator...
Quick question or statement?
Yes.
Not everybody's like Mr. Moskowitz, who watches these meetings even when he's not around. But can you tell us what Scarborough's Rope is? Because I think the public has no idea.
Sure, so I'm going to give you a very simple explanation of it. So when you're looking at that visual, and you're looking at each of those strands, so each of those strands represents an area such as decoding. The top is, when we're looking at our FERSA assessment, FERSA is, I've called out, the decoding skills, phonological skills, sight recognition. So each of those strands, when they work together, they strengthen and they allow and create fluent, for students to be fluent readers. So we're, in the primary grades, we're focused on the, those, that upper part of Scarborough's Rope to get our students to be at the lower end. So again, when they work together, then we're allowing students to become fluent readers. So that's a very simple version of it. So for goal one, our leading indicator, as stated, is our FERSA data. And overall, all grade levels showed an increase in the percentage of students that are on track. On-track rates are important because they, it's a, it provides a leading indicator for the percentage of students who are going to, or we anticipate will be proficient by the end of the year. On-track rates look at the skills that have been taught. So when students are assessed, we're only assessing those skills that teachers have already provided opportunities for students to practice those skills, learn those skills, and then we're, we're assessing students. Kinder in grade two demonstrated an increase of 4%, with grade one, a 2% increase. Something to highlight this year is that our test completion rate grew in terms of percentage. So we had 97% of our K through second grade students that were tested. And that's an important highlight, because when we have a high completion rate, what it allows us to do is to have a more accurate assessment, and it tells us about our, our students' learning and their abilities. Also, when there's a high participation rate as regards to giving an assessment, it tells us something about fidelity to an assessment. Internally, it tells us that our, our people, our teachers, folks that are in front of our students teaching, they believe in this assessment, and they value the data that comes out of the assessment to inform them on their next step. So we're always aiming for, of course, 100% completion rate, but 97% is a good percentage. And last year, we were at approximately 95%. I know that there was a percentage that did not participate, and Mr. Zaid, would you like to add a little bit about that percentage?
We have one school that is conducting what we would consider a little bit of a pilot that we're learning from, and that school is Grant Elementary, who is implementing a curriculum called The Great First Eight. It is a wonderful thematic curriculum that has a social justice component that is embedded in it. And within that curriculum, they do cover assessments, phonics, word recognition, and they have their own assessment. And because they have their own assessment, their kender in first grade do not participate in FERSA. So for kender in first grade, that equates to about 277 students. And when you divide that by the total number of kender and first grade students, it comes out to exactly 3.52%.
So Mr. Zaid, is that what accounts for the 97%?
Yes, it contributes to that 97% of students that did not participate, because they were taking another assessment, yes.
So maybe, again, just to go, maybe a reframing, instead of saying, test completion rates, I guess if we only had the slide, we wouldn't be privy to them taking another assessment. So we're specifically talking about here the FERSA assessment. They, they may, in this case, correct?
Yes.
Correct. So maybe as a side note, Dr. Madrigal, it's not that they're not being assessed, it's that they're just not being assessed through the FERSA assessment.
Correct. And I also want to add that there are students that were not assessed for various reasons. So that will also contribute to the other percentage that equals 100%. So thank you. What we also want to do as we look at our I-Ready diagnostic assessment, similar to what we did with FERSA, we wanted to find what the assessment is. So we wanted to take an opportunity to remind everyone what I-Ready is and what it is not. So I-Ready diagnostic assessment is used to provide insights into comprehension, measure knowledge prior to instruction, identify students' strengths and their areas of need, knowledge levels, and inform instructional planning by identifying learning gaps. I-Ready is not used to grade students, make high-stakes decisions solely based on those results, or measure overall achievement against a standard, or provide a metric for evaluating teacher effectiveness or school performance. So now that we have an understanding of how we're using I-Ready in Long Beach Unified, let's look at our leading indicator data. So for diagnostic two, the percentage of students early on to mid-above were very similar to the previous year. We didn't see much change. We saw that in grade one, there was a decrease by 2%. Grade two maintained, and grade three decreased by 1%. But I do want to note that grade three had the highest percentage, with over 50% of our students performing at the early-on or mid-above grade level range. And we want to continue to see that this percentage grows every year, building on those gains to reach that 70% of students in that range. So in summary, for goal one, the percentage of students on track for foundational reading skills assessment shows that there's steady growth. Meanwhile, the percentage of students performing at the early-on to mid-above grade level on diagnostic two I-Ready assessment remains consistent to the previous year. So with that, I'm going to pause here for any questions the board may have for me or other staff members.
Just a quick question. Can the FERSA scores be disaggregated by race and gender?
Yes, they can.
Can, we don't have that data with us right now.
We do not.
Would you be able to share that with us in the near future, maybe at another presentation?
For the purpose of the update on this particular goal, we would not provide that update in regard to like a board one update, because it's not part of the goal or the leading indicator. But we can definitely disaggregate data for like a summit of reporting at the end of the year for our assessments that we provide in the district.
Dr. Madrigal, just on the goal summary, two bullet points. So can you talk a little bit more that these are two different assessments, right? I-Ready and FERSA. And in one of the assessments, it appears, again, very preliminary, that the growth seems promising, all right? And the other appears it's either maintained or slightly decreased. Can you talk a little bit about, I'm going to use a second column here, Mr. Moskowitz?
Sure.
What might, what might that account for in terms of correlation to the goal?
Absolutely. So these are two different types of assessments. The first one that I spoke about, which is our FERSA reading skills, it's looking at the skills that students have already been taught. Whereas I-Ready has, there's three diagnostics, and the diagnostic, for example, at the beginning of the year, and this was part of our November reporting, it's actually taking like baseline data for that year. So kids have not been taught these skills. Some kids may know, and some may not. At the diagnostic two, we might see, and we, we want to see that there's growth on diagnostic two, because kids have already been in school for several weeks, they've received instruction. So that's the biggest difference, is that one is to give you, inform you on the skills that you have already covered, and you know that kids have had an opportunity to master, whereas the other one, depending also on our, where they are in their unit guides. Something else to note is that our unit, our curriculum, isn't written... isn't written to address how iReady is assessing the skills. In our district, our OCIPD department develops curriculum, unit guides, we have a pacing guide, and there might not be an exact match in alignment in terms of when those skills are, are tested. So that is an important key to remember about the iReady assessment. At the end of the year, perhaps, but even with the end of the year, remember iReady Diagnostic Three is administered in March. So we still have a couple of months of instruction.
What might be, what might you and the team be able to explore to extrapolate on that a little bit more in terms of, you know, is iReady Diagnostic Three the best assessment for what we're trying to determine in March?
What I was going to share was, and this goes back to some of, some of our learning around the interim goals, that part of the, the approach should be that the interim goal, the metrics that you're, that you're looking at, the student outputs that you're looking at, should be those that are most highly correlated in the best way that you can try to figure that out, to the student outcomes themselves. And so part of what Dr. Madrigal and our team are doing right now, even with FERSA and iReady, is trying to calculate what is the correlation. And I know in some of the other presentations you've seen related to Dr. Baker's mid-year, data around our, our unit exams that we provide that are not part of these two, because these are only our interim goals, but our unit exams aren't currently part of the interim goals, have high correlation in some areas. So we're, as a team, we are looking at all of the data that we're gathering from our students, through our teachers, to, and doing the analysis to determine what has the greatest correlation to S-Back ultimately, which is the goal for goal one and two. And then how do we then figure out, how do we uplift that and go dig a little deeper into that? So I would say some of this is our own continued learning phase about which assessments have that greatest correlation.
I have a quick question. What's the reason for having that D-three iReady Diagnostic be in March instead of later in the year?
When, when we first brought on iReady into our district, we did administer it at the end of the year. But dying, the iReady Diagnostic Assessment is, it's, it's given so that it informs us on where students are to be able to respond to that data. So when we brought it in, it was at the end, which is May-June. There isn't enough time to be able to respond to the data and provide some interventions for our students that need it. By moving it to March, it gives us an opportunity to, one, look at what we're currently doing, who are the students that need the support, and giving them like a cycle of intervention and support, whether that be a six-to-eight week cycle. And that gives us an oper, it's really responding to that data and having it be actionable versus before. It, you couldn't make it actionable because of the time.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on? I think we are.
So now we're transitioning to our update on Board Goal Two, which is our reading accelerate, acceleration. So Goal Two states that the percentage of students in grades four through eight scoring at the not-met achievement level in the prior year who meet the scale score growth target on the S-Back. English Language Arts Assessment will increase from twenty-eight percent in June 2023 to sixty percent in June 2028. Our leading indicator that we're using is our iReady reading growth for students who scored not-met on the S-Back the prior year. We continue to monitor the grades and specifically grades four through eight annually. And you can see that we will do that all the way through the 2027-2028 academic school year. And when we're looking at our students that were not met on the previous S-Back, we're talking about, we're talking about approximately six-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-three students across five grade levels. So as outlined in Board Goal Two, we're closely monitoring these students who scored in the not-met achievement level. And you see that it says third grade because that was in the spring. So we're talking about our current fourth graders. And the graphic, as I stated, it should, it kind of gives you like the distribution of our not-met students across these grades. Goal Two differs from Goal One in that it focuses on growth for students who scored not-met on the prior year's S-Back. So thirty percent of our students met accelerated growth target this year, reflecting a two percent overall increase. So each grade level, as shown in the, in the visual, experienced some growth. Notably, grades sixth and seventh, which had the lowest percentage last year, showed the highest gains this year. But they do continue to be our lowest grade in terms of, of growth for our not-met students. So in summary, our Goal Two, the percentage of students who met, who did not meet on the prior S-Back, made some growth. They increased two percentages compared to last year. And we also acknowledge that there, there has to be further analysis of S-Back not-met students, but we have to wait until the end of this year, basically the end of Diagnostic Three data analysis, because that'll give us two years' worth of data where we will be able to, in research, design a study, an internal study, using that available data. That was mentioned last year, but I want to bring it back up to remind the board and staff that that is our commitment, but we want two years of, two years minimum of data on our not-met students. So I will pause here because that concludes the update on Board Goals One and Two for any questions that the board may have for us.
Dr. Madrigal, I'm looking at the, the page sixteen, slide sixteen chart with the Monitor 2024 Not-Met Students. And I, and I do see the boxes, the orange boxes, that overall thirty percent didn't meet. But really, fifty-two percent of our students didn't meet the standard because they nearly met it, but they didn't meet it, right? So I think if we add those, then we're looking at over fifty percent of our students in third and fourth grade, like, and we start doing the math, and where those numbers increase substantially. Is that correct?
So when you are looking at both columns, the orange, you're talking about the orange and the light orange?
That's correct.
Yes, so.
Just for clarification, which ones are the orange and the light orange?
So the light, the dark orange are the not-met and the lighter orange are the nearly not-met and then the nearly not-met. So when we're talking about our board goals, we specifically, for Board Goal Two, we specifically call out our not-met students. So for the purpose of, of this presentation, yes, we're looking at our not-met students. But in a summative report at the end of the year, we can look at all our students. And that is what we do. We look at all our students and how they're doing on these assessments. But for Board Goals, Board Goal Two, it's just our not-met students.
So along the same lines, Dr. Madrigal, in, in past presentations, I think it's been pretty interesting to note that a certain percent of our students are going from not-met to either nearly met or met or above, right? So when we, when we see the summary of, let's say, what the first bullet point, two percent, I think it will also sort of, just going on previous presentations you made, it's also interesting to note that there may be, there may have been students in the nearly met that shifted over to the not-met, right? That's impacting the overall two percent, right? I, I don't know what that may be or, or if there's thoughts on that. But I would be interested if that's, if that's not a significant percent, then it gives more, I think, me, more of a sense of, okay, two percent, right? It's not that it's four percent that are moving into nearly met and not-met, and then two percent are going into not-met. I, I don't know, I mean, we clearly can't tell that from the, from that graph. But what is your, what is your sense? Is it negligible, the, the number of students that are moving into the not-met that were not previously there?
Well, when we're looking at our not-met students, I'll give you an example of students in third grade. Students in third grade, and I'll, I'll talk about students that met at third grade. When they take the assessment, the S-Back in fourth grade, and we're looking at the scale score range, it is much wider. And in some of our grades, like in middle school, I believe it's sixth grade, that is the same, where kids need to gain so much points to just maintain what they had the previous year, whether it was a met or nearly met. So we're talking about students, every year, students can move up and can move down. And I do recall, we did provide a visual where we, we shared how many kids moved from the not-met up and how many moved or stayed the same. And what I recall is that a lot of our students tend to make a lot of movement from the nearly met. And we did have in some occasions, we had, in some grades, where we saw some kiddos that moved from met to, all the way to not-met. Again, it would have to be a matter of, let's look at their scale score range by grade level. That could be an avenue that we could explore. But we do definitely have to keep that in mind, that the scale scores differ by grade level.
Can I ask a big question? What, what are your thoughts on what we're seeing?
Can we jump in for a moment?
Yeah, not, not just you, Dr. Madrigal, the team.
And I would say, I would open this to anyone on the team. I would, I will specifically call out the FERSA data. And the reason I'm calling that out is because remember, early on in this year, when we were talking about the connection between student outcome data, student output data, and the adult actions that are, that are required to change. Student outcomes don't change until adult. Yeah, student outputs, exactly, that thing. So for the last two years, at the elementary level, there has been some very intentional professional development and professional learning that has been taken place by our teachers in TK to second grade, supported by elementary principals, IICs, reading leads, supported by the coaches and team and OCIPD, around specifically, how do you teach foundational skills? And so then we see some, you know, fairly market increases. In fact, you'll recall, we increased our interim board goal for this year for kinder because last year's kinders had overachieved what we had already planned for them for this year. They were, they'd already beat that. And so we, we increased the interim goal for this year based on that. So I think when you say, what is it, what are you seeing? There's a lot we're still learning, but to see a, a fairly strong-looking correlation between in-depth professional learning around structured literacy at the K-two level and foundational reading skills, which are directly connected to what the professional learning's been around, showing a pretty market increase to the point where we had to upwardly revise our interim goal, I would say that there's some promise to that. I don't know, Mr. Zaid, if you would add anything from what you've seen in the training or, or Dr. Lynn?
The, the only thing that I would add to that in terms of what we're seeing is in regards to FERSA, we, there has been some very intentional training. But the thing that I really appreciate most is our recent collaboration and the way in which we're working hand-in-hand together. So our teachers have gotten really good at what we call our daily decoding routine. And that is moving through the phonological awareness and taking the students through a variety of different blending and segmenting and, and really breaking apart and understanding sounds. And so our teachers have moved from those routines to now us really focusing on small group instruction. And so our last principals' meeting included our OCIPD coaches, as well as our principals, going out into classrooms to take a look at the instruction, to provide coaching and to provide support. And some of those intentional ways in which we are continuing to learn together, build together, reflect together, look at the data and make those adjustments. You know, what I'm seeing is in alignment with, with some of that small group instruction work.
I would just add two pieces to that. Mr. Otto, you had asked about the Scarborough Rope that was referenced earlier. The daily decoding routines directly support the top part of that rope. The bottom part of that rope has been a focus of our training for this year, on really helping teachers transfer that decoding skills into meaning-making. So one thing is to be able to read the text. The second is to be able to make sense of the text. So how do you translate that into understanding of vocabulary, meaning-making, traditional reading comprehension, you might consider it, so that it does translate into a deeper understanding of the text? So our training this year has had a stronger focus on that second component and really deepening teachers' expertise in skills in that area so that we do see bumps in that reading comprehension. The second piece I would add is really adding in our literacy focus to our three-five teachers for next year. And this is in direct support of Board Goal Two. So our focus for the past two years has really been in K-two literacy, three-five math. We are layering in math in K-two and we are layering in literacy in three-five. Starting off with this summer, actually building on some training that we had done with K-two with Laco, sending our teachers to a Laco training to build content knowledge around the science of reading, doing so with our third-through-fifth grade teachers this coming summer as a kickoff to our literacy work in three-five. And then also exploring opportunities on supporting teachers in six-eight on working with struggling readers. So that's part of our professional development plan for next year.
My brother, you must have stole my thoughts right out of my head because that was really my question. Well, first off, I wanted to thank Dr. Madrigal for presenting the data. As a board, I think we've been chomping at the bit to get this information, you know? We've talked about a number of board meetings on how we were looking forward to our board monitoring data and how we wanted a little bit more depth in regards to the success of our students. And so this is what this is. Now, the part that I'm going to speak candidly, that gives me a little bit of cause for pause, is because I also understand that this is still just an interim goal. So it's like, is it fair to give true assessment, true feelings, true criticism while we're still in the process of getting the, these are interim goals, getting the actual data on where we are, right? And so I'm hesitant to give, not criticism, just comment, just because I, I think that this is more of an informative workshop than it is one that needs true comment. But I will say this. One of the things that I was curious about, and Dr. Lynn has already addressed it, which, which was very helpful in regards to some of the work that we're doing, what are some of the inputs that we're talking about in helping improve the reading skills of our littles? But the part that I think was missing in some of the things that you spoke to, which once again just heightens my curiosity, is yes, there are different tools that we can provide our teachers to support reading. What additional supports are we providing to students, maybe in that, that gap, right? We're talking about the summers to support as well. One of the things that I've brought up on many of occasions is talking about a, a number of different programs that happen in the summer that support reading, one of which is the Success and Challenges Program in Freedom School, right? Which is a school literally dedicated to help kids between the ages of kinder to fifth grade read. And it's, it's just a school, free school, built on those principles. And so I think about how those opportunities are still very much available to us. And I'd be curious to hear how the district has thought of outside-of-the-box interventions to support students as well as supporting our teachers and the curriculum in improving some of those reading skills.
What I might suggest, great questions. What I might suggest is, so you'll, you'll recall that we kind of are going through the cycle of looking at our student outcomes-focused governance. We look at the student data, the interim goals, the, the progress. And then we have an opportunity to kind of hear voices from the field and we kind of share where we at and what are some of the things we're up to. We actually have on our calendar right now that in kind of the April-May time, we're cycling back around Board Goals One and Two with some of that information. We'll be back in March around Board Goals Three and Five, Three and Four, and then the fifth one. Board Goals Three and Four. And then we'll cycle back around some of the voices from the field. So I think if we can kind of continue, I appreciate the question. I think we can't give the full extent of what we're up to.
I think we're saying the same thing, where I felt, I feel my question is probably premature. So yes, absolutely, I understand that it's premature, but I wanted to make sure that I at least planted that seed.
I'll ask another premature question. So Brian, just to circle back to an earlier point that you made when I asked about sort of what, what are the assessments actually telling us and sort of further looking at that? So. So uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm saying that out loud because sort of in preparation to what I might be thinking about or asking uh when we get the next um presentation on Board Goals One and Two. So if our theory of change, as I understand it, as has been iterated uh by many, many uh members of our team, is if teachers and educators do X, Y, and Z in the classroom, the research shows, the preliminary LUSD data shows uh that there's a strong correlation with those things and the outcomes uh that we're hoping to achieve. So if, if teachers and we're observing them and, and other educators are doing X, Y, and Z, um, that there's a strong correlation to the outcomes that we'd like to see. Uh, if, if that's the theory of change, the, the, the question I think before me for upcoming presentation or, or question bucket is um related to the assessment then. So for me, I'm thinking about um then either the assessment that we're using, and I know it's not just one, is either not the best for determining whether what we want to see is actually happening and/or we may not be doing that diagnostic or that assessment at exactly the precise time to be able to determine that. So my wonderings are gonna be around that, right? If, if we're observing teachers and educators doing what we think they should be doing based on what we hope are the expected outcomes, then when we do see that they're doing that uh and perhaps we're not seeing the data uh that we would expect to see, in this case, let's say it maintains, again, in, in, in the next year and the next two diagnostics, uh, then really my questions are around, are we using the right assessments and are those assessments being, uh, taking place at the right time? All right, because my hope and my expectation would be that if educators are doing what we believe, what the research says leads to the expected outcomes, and yet we're either maintaining or, 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 or not increasing or growing at, at the, at what we would want to see, um, those would be my questions, right? So just, I know, I know we got another diagnostic in March. I know there's some work that's done after that diagnostic, but again, me thinking, okay, we will have two years uh here. Um, what kinds of questions then? Because again, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that this PD pays off, right? That these trainings pay off to align with our theory of change. If our behaviors change, if those behaviors change and they do what the research suggests um lead to the outcomes that we want, uh, then, then I really, then, then I start thinking about, okay, then are we using the right assessments? Um, then are the assessments being deployed in the way that we want to at the right time of the year? Not to answer today, but those are the things that I'm taking away from tonight's presentation.
I explained this at the office the other day, what we were doing and why we were trying to do it. And as I was trying to say it or understand it, I, I, I couldn't help but think, okay, so um the testing is, there are different kinds of tests. Um, they're given at different times and that seems to make a real difference because even a few weeks, you've got instruction or there wasn't instruction. Um, uh, we don't know whether uh what we're measuring is showing whether, what, the, whether s, are we capturing the people that are declining from other places and um, and, and I, and I thought, and it's, and there's more than that. Uh, and remember when we first brought in tests um that we thought were faster and we could get better data and do all that? And I thought, I don't know how to measure this. I don't know whether what, what we're doing is, is giving us information that we can truly rely on. I, I, this is a very bad analogy, but when they did those Westinghouse studies way back in the thirties or so, they would increase the illumination, productivity would go up, they'd increase it more, go up, increase it more, go up, and they said, huh, let's see. So they decreased it and it went down, uh, but it didn't go down, it went up again. And the reason for that was they said, well, it's because you're paying attention to them. And uh now you're giving, you're, you're training teachers better and they're doing uh other things and I, I, I'm just uh, I, I believe in this. I think that this is the right way to do it. It's just hard to isolate what's happening and why.
Um, for me, I just like maybe thoughts on um when we make adjustments as the COVID funding comes to an end and we have to make adjustments at the local site level, how this will then impact our student outcomes? So maybe your thoughts on that and, and maybe things that we are planning to do um in preparation of that, um, given the results that we currently have?
So our, our COVID funding did come to an end and one of the things, or not one of the things, the way that we have included community input and looking at our, our student results is to align with the board goals. Um, and so the LCAP, actually the LCAP that was shared, that an update was shared tonight was related to your board goals. And so um while COVID funding ended at the site level, our priorities have been around funding for, maintaining funding for significant professional learning experiences, to have intervention coaches out supporting teachers and students at school sites, to maintaining some of the key aspects of how we support students and support teachers as well, um, because this is significant change. So just as you all are experiencing, thinking about behavior in a boardroom, every one of our adults, when we think about the adult portrait and who influences student achievement, it's a, it's a lot of hard work for our teachers to think about what change needs to look like in their classroom. And so our, our approach is provide a lot of intense professional learning experiences. In this case, we're talking about K two reading, which is really um just credit to the OCIPD team, to the academic office, to partners who have provided that. Um, our core instruction is at the heart of when we think about the outcomes for our students, high-quality core instruction. It's why it's at the center of our strategic plan. It's why when we think about the work of our district, it isn't just, yes, expanded learning opportunities, we have amazing expanded learning opportunities every day after school across our district. The alignment that has happened because of the way our team has thought about expanded learning opportunities, including summer, um, it has never been more tightly aligned to the actual day-to-day curriculum. But I have said many times, the magic happens in our classrooms. And so it is incumbent on us to continue to, continue to develop teachers to meet the needs of the students who every day are in our buildings now, um, and to give them the supports that they need to make a difference in the, the hours in, in our classrooms. I um really appreciate the combination of Goal One and Goal Two, and here's why, something that hasn't been said. Um, as you all were, were reviewing data with us to determine your goals, you had a lot of choices to make about what is going to make a difference for our students. Um, it takes patience to focus on Goal One. And I say that because significantly thinking about a reading program does not change outcomes overnight. While we are continuing to see some really bright spots in the, the um ninety-seven percent of students plus taking a foundational reading assessment and growing, we have to be patient with those results because I, um, based on what our team is up to, we should see um significant changes in the numbers of middle school students not meeting or being significant below. But it does take time to shift from a preventative approach, leading up to third grade and teaching reading in a very different way, to see those results so that when you're looking at upper grade reading and looking at students that have not met on a standardized test, that actually you see those two things come into focus. But I've appreciated the focus on Goal One. The reason you stood for it for all students um is because we know that reading by third grade, in the approach of, and Doug, I'm glad you asked the question, just about understanding Scarborough's rope. Thank you, Chris, for illuminating that. It is, we know what research shows us, that if students read by third grade, they have, their success is laid out for them. Um, I do want to add also that tonight's presentation is about board goals and thank you for the strong reminder about the board goals. Um, it is easy for us, we want to know all the things, we do, we do too. And so we have to focus ourselves when it is coming to you with a monitoring report that brings up a lot of curiosity. What I can assure you that tonight's not about is what's happening at schools in this mid-year time. So there is disaggregated data, there are data chats that go on between principals and teachers, our principal supervisors and academic office are visiting classrooms regularly, collecting observational data, and then also looking at their quantitative data. It's part of a principal's evaluation cycle. There's a mid-year data process where teams at the school level that include, in many cases include department heads, lead teachers, classroom teachers, counselor, principal, they're participating in an analysis that is, that is specific to their school site and reporting up through members of our team. Not only does that influence what happens at the classroom level, it's learning for us. So you are asking good questions about decision-making, about assessments. While we may come to you with a contract to, you know, that we're gonna change something around our, our um assessments, it is for us to think about where do we see that the assessments that we're using give us great indication that we are going to meet our board goals? We are doing that analysis. In fact, our teams cross-department um spent two hours this morning in some analysis and really thinking without doing something that does not include teachers in the field, administrators who are already monitoring. So sometimes an idea sounds like you might just do it quickly and we need to think about our entire system and what it means to be the teacher in the elementary classroom. When you hear, oh, now there's a dyslexia screener that's required, is that, if you're a first grade teacher, is that on top of all of the assessments that he or she already has to do? Or can we make an informed decision using our learning inside the system to say, we can now replace that in the LCAP metrics? We can replace that as an interim assessment? And so while some things seem simple, there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes, even to make adjustments, not even, to make adjustments to district goals that have been called interim goals and to get more intense with fewer goals. Today was an amazing contrast, all of the dozens of goals that we are required to have in an LCAP and then how do you increase precision so that those who are closest to the work in a classroom influencing students each and every day can speak to what your focus is, the four board goals that you have set and what we're monitoring and not just think they don't know what is important in our district? And so that sounds a little bit like a speech, but just taking in all of the requests and thinking about how, how motivated we are to see growth and to align to the board goals and to not overwhelm our system, even though we have a lot of thoughts about um what we're, what we're learning from the assessments.
Dr. Baker, thank you for that. Uh, I, I would continue to encourage you and the team that even if we don't have um definitive answers, I think it's important, um, and I'm gonna relate it to Ms. Lopez's question about disaggregating data. Um, when, when we came up with these board goals, we, we looked and we saw that there was a disproportionate number of students with disabilities, black students, emerging bilinguals that had not met, all right? So not that we're trying to code who that is, but we know who that is. And so um to the dyslexia screener, um, these, these things come up in spaces, our, our Special Education Community Advisory Committee, I think I shared with you in our briefing uh and the team, that that was part of the conversation, right? The dyslexia screener for our disability community, uh, right? Who is overrepresented uh in the not met or not yet uh met. Um, we, we've had conversations, Ms. Lopez has asked about our emerging bilinguals, all right? Um, so we have new things in place uh for classification, for reclassification. So I, again, I would encourage the team um to, to, to feel empowered that even if we don't have a definitive answer, it's important for us to hear this as we are in other spaces with other underserved subgroups that we may not be um focusing on through our board goals, but certainly in this goal, we know who the not met uh is. We know who those students are, right? Uh, and they're disproportionately those subgroups of our most underserved uh students. So uh just, just keep, keep, keep telling us, all right, about this work, uh, even if it's just you're thinking of, hey, we're thinking that we may try to use this dyslexia screener um because it also allows for us to do X, Y, and Z.
And if I can just comment just really quickly too. First off, I, I appreciated your comments as well. I think the one piece that you uh confirmed for not just me, I hope for the, our millions of viewers, of course, um, the wa, uh, the, the why. I think that often in systems our size, people are used to doing the what and almost feel that they're being imposed on the what, but don't unnecessarily understand or maybe even agree with the philosophical understanding on why we're going about this in a certain way. And so uh with your statement of how a lot of our PD is centered around our thought process on how we can improve reading skills, I think that confirms, this is, this is how we're going to improve our reading. We are going to provide our students and our teachers with some of the best PD and some of the best uh practices on um, on phonics and um, that's what we're going to do, right? And I think that there's other philosophical thoughts that, and I'm gonna tease my, my family a little bit, our old school uh train of thought was uh, reading improves reading, right? But that's not necessarily always the case, right? All, like you can be spending hundreds and thousands of hours, but probably using poor practices, right? And poor reading skills. And so understanding the why, I think was very, very, very helpful. And so I, I appreciated that because I think that um as somebody who is always thinking and behaving from a philosophical values, principle-based approach, uh, it was great to hear that, so thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think we're, we're learning a lot and that, that helps us in our uh monitoring process because it demonstrates how we are always learning, that things are always changing. What was important to us uh last June, maybe the June prior to that, um, may not be as important to us now because we're learning that there are other things that we can rely on. So that's, that's the importance of the monitoring as the board monitors progress on the goals, um, that monitoring cascades um down throughout our system and, and underscores the importance of, of having a, an eye on what's happening and what, what will be giving us the results that we desire. So unless there's any, any, unless there are any further questions or comments, um, we will um, thank you, thank everyone for their presentation. And I know um with, with every presentation, there's so much time and effort that goes into it and um we, we appreciate um all of that. So report of board members, we will start with Alana.
Thank you. Um, two things for tonight, um, one being at the opportunity to go to a Sankofa Parent Village meeting last night. Um, so that is um our kind of supportive community for the parents of our black scholars. Um, and so I was able to attend and, and hear their input and what they were discussing and their plans for um, one, celebrating Black History Month this month and what they're doing on campus, and then two, just uh conversations of how we can lift up the ba, black students on our campus. So it was really cool to go and see um such caring parents who they are there not only for their students, but also for themselves to be in that supportive community. Um, so that's a really great um opportunity um that those have. Um, and they've um done some great work with just helping our, the black students on our campus to just feel more comfortable on their own skin and know that they have a place and um provide them with greater opportunities. I know um we've had a couple of students who are able to attend the HBCU tours. Um, and then there's also some cool opportunities where they're able to um explore narratives of black authors or um, I know the student representative that we had speak today, she talked about, um, they did, um, I forgot what it was called. It was just um Taste of Soul, I think it was called. Um, yeah. So that's something we also have done on our campus, we think we started it last year. Um, and so not only has that lifted up our, our black students, but it has also created kind of a path for um our other ethnicities on campus. And I know um that our principal, Ms. Coleman, she was there and she was talking about And I know that our principal, Ms. Coleman, she was there and she was talking about how they did Taste of Soul last year, and then a group of Asian kids came up there and said, "Okay, how can we do that for the Asian community on our campus?" So, that's a really great community that they have there. And just props and kudos to Mr. Jonathan Hawkins, who is kind of heading it and also heading the Black Student Union on our campus, as well as Ms. Mary Paul, who is a parent of one of our former students, and also our principal, Ms. Coleman. And then, secondly, I want to touch on kind of a professional experience that our SADA seniors were able to have, I think it was about a week or two ago. So, SADA was currently partnering with a company called EXP. I'm not exactly sure what the acronym stands for, but it's E-X-P. They're doing some pretty cool stuff. They're partnering currently with the juniors on our campus to kind of give them some career readiness, and I know they're working on resumes, and there will be possible opportunities for internships for the students. But then with our seniors, we got to take a little field trip, which is kind of a rarity for us. And we were able to attend Medical Design and Manufacturing West Conference, which is one of the nation's biggest trade shows in the medical device manufacturing industry. We were able to go and hear from professionals and learn about the manufacturing and do a tour of the show floor. So, it was a really unique, special opportunity for our students to just be more exposed to the different career opportunities, and we were also able to hear from a bunch of industry professionals. And we had a little kind of conference with them beforehand, and they really focused on kind of coming from all backgrounds. There was professionals who had done the college path. There was those who came from kind of a rough background. They didn't go to college, but they worked their way up, and they're extremely successful in their careers. So, it was really unique and really valuable to our students to be able to see that, the opportunities that are there for them if they choose to pursue it. So, yeah. And then also a thanks to Mr. Michael Amy, who put EXP in collaboration with SADA. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Shout out to EXP. I'm a big fan. They do great work. So, I have a couple of things I want to talk about. First, I wanted to thank the teachers over at John Muir. I got an opportunity to visit with them last week. And, you know, having a talk about the things that are going on at their campus, talking about some of the transition that they've experienced, I just appreciate the opportunity for open conversation and to hear how our 50,000-foot decisions trickle down to our campuses. And it was a very much a healthy conversation. I thought that there were some small tweaks that we could make as a campus and as a district, and then there were others that they were just curious about what was going on from a larger decision-making standpoint. And I think that it was a very, very helpful conversation for me. And so, I just wanted to thank them for their willingness to open their doors and allow me to suck up a whole bunch of air out of the room, but then vice versa, for me to open both ears and listen to everything they had to share. Next, I got an opportunity to participate in Lafayette's Career Fair. And at this career fair, they highlighted African-Americans who are predominantly employed in the city of Long Beach. So, there were a number of people who participated. Dr. Norma Spencer was there, I was there, the mayor was there. You know, it was a powerful space. I say powerful mainly because I've shared my story about how I made the decision at 12 years old to decide to be an architect, right? And so, I shared that same story with those young people, and they, too, were surprised that they were saying to themselves, "An architect? What is that? Why is that? Why'd you make that decision?" And so, it was great being able to, I guess, be a visual for Billie Jean King's saying of, "When you see it, you can be it," right? And so, letting them hear like, "Yeah, there's a black man who was an architect that grew up just around the corner from here," right? And so, it was really cool to have folks like the mayor, like, "Hey, yes, you can be the mayor if you want to. You can be anything you want to be." And so, to be able to inspire young people in that space for the 20, 30 minutes I had to speak, I just really appreciated that space. And then, I wanted to thank the principal there and all folks who put on the event, to have the presence of mind to center it around African-Americans in the month of February. So, really cool. And so, I wanted to just thank him for that. Speaking to that space, obviously, we're in the, we're in Black History Month, and our district has a number of really, really cool events that we've hosted already, but it's not done. There's still a few that I'm really, really excited about. Obviously, Black Girl Joy is on the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. We have our Talent Showcase, Sankofa Saturdays is back. I just, as I highlight all of the different programs that we, as a district, are doing for our African-American communities, I can't help but think about a lot of the uncomfortable conversations that are coming from federal leadership and are trickling down into our neighborhoods. As we've felt a number of executive orders centered towards our African-American community, as we've seen some executive orders centered at the LGBTQ community, now they've seen executive orders centered around our undocumented community. I think that it is important that we continue as Long Beach, and I think as a city, we do a great job of this, is remembering that we're all one people and being supportive of one another regardless of our ethnic background, our sexual preference, et cetera. And so, with that understanding that these district events that we host centered around the African-American community are not just for black folks, they are for all folks, right? Speaking as a black man, I'm going to jokingly say, I think that we do it just as well as everyone else, where we open our doors to everyone. And I would implore all who are interested, all that have had curiosities, all that have wanted to be in further support of our black community within the district to participate in these events, regardless of where you come from, where you live, who you love, as it's important in regards to the values that we have as a city and as we have as a district. And I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight those points because I think it's an important one. That's all for my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
And that, Mr. Miller, is why we need to fight to protect public education for all those things. I'll be very brief because I think either our superintendent or deputy superintendent will speak more to this. So, I mean, you said uncomfortable. It's hateful, hurtful, damaging, traumatic, causing harm to our students and our system. And so, in that context, I did have an opportunity to participate in a rally that Teachers Association helped to organize. Our superintendent was there, as well as some colleagues here on the board, to protect public education and to advocate for the students that showed up today, to our most underserved, our most vulnerable students. And so, I referenced, and hopefully, Dr. Baker and/or Dr. Brown will touch on this, I referenced our commitment in a time where it's not just about rhetoric. It's about policies, it's about funding, it's about hate, it's about emboldening segments of our community to say and do whatever they feel like doing, no matter what harm it causes to our community. So, anywhere and everywhere that we can, I feel compelled to continue to invite my colleagues here on the board, as well as other systems leaders and elected officials, to stand with our students right now and publicly say, you know, "We're not passing a resolution here, we're not taking action, but we can publicly stand for something. We can say, if you so feel compelled to, that I oppose mass deportation policies because of the harm that they cause in our communities. I oppose any legislation or policy that harms our trans students." We can say that. We have the power. That's what we were elected to do. And I invite my colleagues here, I invite our systems leader, elected officials, to not just say that, but then to move forward on the actions that are required of us at this very pivotal moment in our time. I did have an opportunity to attend an immigration workshop. I'm hoping that Dr. Brown or Dr. Baker speak more about that. But a reminder to those students and those folks that civically participated and engaged in the last week, that we see you. I don't know, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone but myself, but that's exactly what we want the students to do in our district. Because if we don't empower our students to have a mission, an agency about what's the most important thing to them and to us, then I think we're missing an opportunity. So, for the courage that was shown in the last couple of weeks, for the courage that was shown today, I commend our students, our community members, our allies, but I also invite my colleagues and our other electeds to confirm that commitment publicly. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
So, I'm going to start off and talk about student outcome-focused governance because we didn't, I didn't, we didn't get to talk about that, about where we are now and where it is that we're going. And we did have this meeting more or less a month ago, maybe two months ago, I can't remember bylaws, and, pardon?
December.
Last year or the year before that?
No, '24.
Oh, wasn't sure. It seemed like a long time. But the upshot of that now is I've talked to Wayne and I've talked to Jeff, and we're moving ahead. There've been some meetings, and we're going to come up with a list of the things we're pretty agreed upon and the things that we can agree upon, and then we can have a meeting probably in early March or maybe later March about bylaws. And I think it's not that complicated. I think that it can be done relatively quickly because it's not about wordsmithing, it's about what do we want, what do we need in order to do what it is that we're going to do? And then, we have this implementation timeline. I got it, I looked at it, I said, "Oh, it's 12 pages long." You know, this takes us all into 2026. And so, there's a lot of stuff to do, but I think the school district, the communities that we serve need to know that we're doing this and that we're making progress on it. And I think that that's important. My reaction to the students today speaking was, first, I thought, "This is going to be the entire meeting." And then I thought, "Let's listen, see what it is that they've got to say." And then what I got to was, "I still think we need to have better meetings." And what I mean by better meetings, and I've talked to several people here about that, is that, you know, we sit here and we take it. I realize there are rules, and we're not supposed to say anything. I think people are frustrated because we're not saying things. And I think, "Well, maybe what we could do is start off the meetings with saying, 'These are the things we're doing now about these things that we know are going to come up,' so that people understand that and it doesn't take the thunder away. It makes us more in connection with the students and everybody else who comes out and speaks." I was very inspired by Chris and the cellphone stuff because I think that that's an accents point. And I really do hope that we can post someplace that's very accessible what was presented tonight about the cellphone things and make it part of what we're talking, you know, this is part of the way the board works. And how do we increase the student voice? How do we create or encourage the coming together with the people in the district? I'm very frustrated with this idea that we can't respond. I get that we, I understand what the rules are and that you really can't do that, but I think there are ways around it, and there are ways to make, to communicate to the public that the board is on a joint journey with what's going on. And we all know there's a lot going on that is very disconcerting and is creating problems, and yet, we don't have a forum or some way to do that. I don't know if it's an agenda item, I don't know how to do that, but I do think that we need to explore ways. I've provided some information about the National Civic League and what they're doing for school districts and communities about how it is that we develop a better relationship with the community, not by listening only, but by participating. So, I'm going to devote a little bit more time to that to see if there's a way that we can come up with it. It's especially important because of the social media connection, and I think if we, that reaching out because of that will help us extend, encourage student voice, community voice for the way it is that we do things. So, I think that's about it for tonight. It was a very good meeting because of everything that went on, and I think that, as you can tell, I'm struggling a little bit with the goals and what it proves and how we're doing it, and I just have to keep working on that because I think it's really important that, personally, that I understand it more thoroughly than I do right now to make it work. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Well, I had the wonderful opportunity to visit the Long Beach School for Adults. And Principal Nicole Lopez's first words were, "Do you know how lucky I feel every day to be able to work at this school?" So, it wasn't long before I knew why everyone there was so happy. They were excited about their work, the staff felt valued, and there's just so much joy on this campus. Like, it can just, every room that I walked in, everyone was just thrilled and excited. And it was great speaking with Betsy Macha, Kristna Samuel, Yvette Gonzalez, Josh Barnes, Julian Aletto, and Sandy Watts. But it was just great to hear these educators say, "This is the best job I've ever had." So, I'll tell you a little bit about the school. LBSA provides classes for adults to help them earn their high school diploma or equivalency. They provide job training and provide English development skills. They have a very healthy enrollment. In fact, the principal told me that at the beginning of the school year, they had a waiting list. While I was there, I visited classrooms, but I also visited their testing center, and I learned that LBSA had strategically opened a larger testing center on campus, as the testing center is crux of their program and is required by the state and federal funding. They offer the HIGHSET and the CASAS tests at the center, and they've gone from an average of 30 HIGHSET tests at the center to 100 HIGHSET tests. And from zero CASAS test over, to over 250 CASAS tests a month. Their data increased substantially from 52% to 68% with an 8% increase in educational functioning level, which exceeds a state average of 58%. What was also impressive is that their graduation rates also increased by 50% over the last five years with an average of 10% gain a year. And because of their impact, they expect to graduate 20% more than the average this school year. And according to the principal, 30% of their adult students are parents of LBUSD students, 28% of their students are between the ages of 18 and 24-years-old, 28% 28 between the ages of 25 and 39, and 28 percent 40 to 55 years old. And then 16 percent are over 55 years of age. And their ESL program represents over 50 countries and over two dozen languages. And there's a lot to be said about this school because I was super impressed and I was really inspired by their work. And I just want to give the staff there, the principal, a shout out. It was just impressive, being in your campus, walking into your classrooms, everyone super engaged, everyone excited about learning, excited about teaching, and I just, this is my hope for every classroom in our district. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just start by saying I was so filled with pride as those students spoke tonight. I think that's what we want for all of our students, that they reach their full potential and they're clearly on their way, but as part of the student portrait or the student profile, you know what I mean? Graduate, well, I was so close. But they were so, they were so passionate, so well spoken, they've challenged us. It was good to hear from those students. But I'll kind of get into my report. I attended an event for the Long Beach Council PTA, it was a Founder's Day celebration. Our Long Beach Council PTA has been around since 1909, so well over 100 years, and it was the first in-person celebration they've held since COVID, so it was special from that respect. And I appreciate that there are still people volunteering, you know, to benefit not only their own students but other students as well. And it's such a grassroots effort in supporting the students of the district, so I just want to thank everybody involved. And then also, I wanted to mention Lakewood High School. I know we have high school, or yeah, school of choice going on, and it occurred to me that I don't mention the pathways very often, or I, you know, we don't hear about them often enough. And so tonight I wanted to talk a little bit about one specific pathway at Lakewood High School, and it's Odyssey. And the Odyssey pathway is designed for our future stewards of the earth with a marine-themed and science-based focus. And it's unique in the district because I believe it's the only pathway that's, that has this specific, I'm getting the nod from Mr. Samuel's, yes, okay, the only pathway designed for the environmental sciences. And so environmental studies with a connection to one of, to one of the fastest growing industry sections, not only regionally but also locally. And they offer courses like oceanography, which sounds really fun to me, and conservation biology and other marine sciences. So I thought I would just highlight that pathway because we don't hear enough about all the wonderful things that are offered in our district. And then also, at our last board meeting, we had several people speak out from a group called Rainbow Families, and they kind of challenged us to stand with them as we have been standing with other groups and community members. So I have a statement I'd like to read. Oh, it's called Standing in Solidarity: Supporting Our Diverse Long Beach Unified Community. And this was a message that went out yesterday. So, "Dear students, parents, caregivers, and community, Long Beach Unified stands firmly with our LGBTQ plus students, staff, and families, along with every student, every family, and every staff member, today and always. And our commitment to excellence and equity inspires everything we do. In the face of societal and political challenges that attempt to divide rather than unite, we reaffirm our unwavering stance. Every student, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, background, disabilities, immigration status, race, faith, culture, or housing situation, deserves to be seen, feel safe, and supported while under our care. We reject any attempt to undermine dignity, create division, or deny the right to an inclusive education. Long Beach Unified is committed to fostering an inclusive, equitable, and welcoming environment for all. This means ensuring every student, family, and staff member across all identities, backgrounds, and lived experiences has access to the resources, opportunities, and support they need to thrive. This means fostering safe and affirming spaces for our LGBTQ plus students, families, and staff. This means expanding mental health support for those navigating trauma or adversity. This means addressing disparities in special education, racial equity, and economic opportunity to close achievement gaps. This means celebrating and respecting the unique contributions of every identity, race, culture, and background represented within our school communities. Together as one community, we reject hate, break down barriers, and work on building a nurturing and accepting environment where every student, without exception, can excel. This is not just our responsibility, it's our moral imperative. Thank you for standing with us in solidarity, love, and unwavering support for every member of our Long Beach Unified community."
I'll hand it over to our superintendent, Dr. Baker.
First of all, thank you for amplifying that message that reached every one of our employees and families yesterday, so I appreciate that. In addition to what you brought voice to tonight, President Craig had, that message also links families to different resources. And when I finish my report, I'm going to pass to Dr. Brown to reaffirm some of the resources and some of the approach that is being taken in protection of our students. So thank you for sharing that out loud again tonight, our students. Need to hear that. I just have a couple of announcements of things that are coming up, and then as I said, I will pass to Dr. Brown to close us out tonight. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for amplifying Sancofa activities. Next Tuesday night, February 25th, we will have the pleasure of attending Sancofa at the Apollo, and I love the invitation that you made to our community. Sancofa at the Apollo is a celebration of Black music. It's, information's available on our website. It will be at Jordan High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I can't wait to see our students perform Sancofa at the Apollo. Excited to be there. Doors open at 5:00. Also, before we're back together for a board meeting, I'll just include in my report tonight that we are reaching the time of year when elementary students will be offered the opportunity to learn about MSKA choices that they may want for their families, starting on March 1st, Saturday, March 1st, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Cabrillo High School. An opportunity for families to learn about programs and electives and community partnerships before the online application starts, or before the online application opens on March 24th. And then lastly, our LCAP team this year, that will be led by Dr. Lucy Salazar, put out a call to action and a challenge to all of us. So live on the LCAP website, which you can either go lbschools.net/LCAP, or you can just use the Alpha Index, go to L for LCAP, the Thought Exchange is live. And we invite our community, our internal community and external community, to answer the question as we develop next year's LCAP, which will be the second year of a multi-year LCAP. What programs, services, or supports do you believe will have the most impact on student success in LBUSD? So I challenge us in the room and those watching to think a way on Thought Exchange. It is now active. And with those things in mind, I pass to Dr. Brown to close us out with some important reaffirmation of our resources and how we are standing in solidarity with our immigrant families.
Thank you for the opportunity. As has already been expressed, thank you to the students who came out tonight. We heard from approximately 10 students, and we know that when 10 students are so moved, they represent thousands. And so much gratitude for their bravery and for keeping us grounded in exactly where we need to be. Responsively to some of the things that they shared, I wanted to highlight, again, some of the recent resources that we have made available with the idea that these are organic and fluid resources that we will continue to add to as we hear from community, when we hear expressed concerns, when we learn from experts, and when we hear of other ways that we can be providing more clear support. So just to highlight a few things, on our district website, we have a landing page, Standing in Solidarity: Empowering Our Immigrant Students and Families. And we are keeping that website live and with current information. I want to highlight a couple of the specific sentiments that were expressed this evening. These have recently, in a series of videos that were created and sent out last week, these items have recently been addressed, but I just want to, for the good of everyone, address them again tonight. So the first and most important thing is that no time in any enrollment process, program enrollment, do we ask about the immigration status of any student or their family. And I'm going to say that unequivocally and again, under no circumstances do we ask for immigration status for any student or their family, for any program, district enrollment, participation in childcare, et cetera. At no point do we ask. Secondly, ICE does not come onto our campus, period, unequivocally. There is no cause for ICE to come onto a campus for any reason, and our practices, our training of staff, and our protocols support exactly that. And we will continue to monitor as the need arises to change any part of the practice, but I want to make that a very clear and strong statement. Next, we want to highlight that privacy is held in the highest regard, and much like the medical profession follows the process of HIPAA rights, we follow the process around FERPA rights, which are around educational records, and they require us to hold extreme privacy around the exchange of student information. We would not exchange student information for any reason short of a parent or guardian directing us and giving us permission to do so. And in recent training with office supervisors and counselors and administrators, we've revisited that practice to not just include, that does not just pertain to information that is written, it pertains to information that is said. So we're responsible for the words that are shared, and we hold ourselves as employees in support and care of students and their families to the strictest level of privacy. Next, on our website, we have a number of resources where we are offering Know Your Rights presentations in partnership with community organizations, and we will continue to do so. That is a community ask and a need that we can respond to and fulfill. One of the resources that has come to our attention, and it was referenced tonight by students, was the term red card, which has clear rights and a message that could be shared around immigration enforcement. And to date, our district has produced 50,000 of those cards to be distributed to schools and community organizations with needs for them or desire for them. Those cards have also been produced in 14 different languages based on the needs that have arisen. So having said all that, I also want to say that if there is a student or a staff member in our system who does not know that information, then we need to do better with sharing our resources. Because the thing that stood out to me more this evening than the students' bravery and strength and commitment to what they did in front of us this evening, is that if we have all these resources and they don't know that exactly what they're asking for already exists, then we need to do better. And so that's my takeaway from the evening, to begin work on that tomorrow morning and continue on, so that the great resources that we have are known by everyone. Our strength is in people knowing and being able to use these resources. And so we are, we stand up to the call to action that was given to us tonight by our young people and look forward to the ways that we can continue to strengthen the response that we hope to have for community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you to everyone. I know it's been a long day, and you've been here since very early, so thank you. A lot of work goes into these presentations and everything that everybody does. And without objection, we will adjourn the meeting at this time. So good evening, everyone.